Okay. He lives the closest too, I mean he can see that we're all parked here.
I'll text.
Well, and maybe what we could even do is we could jump to item two. Mark, if you are ready, and then we can come back to the plow discussion. Are you here, prepared to talk about the public works? Yeah, why don't we start with that and then we'll, we'll, we'll go back to the first agenda item. So, thanks for being here and look forward to hearing your remarks. The button.
Screen is on, okay, thank you. So chatting with the mayor here might be a kind term, a couple, but just after the election about the, some of the positions, we got talking about the Public Works Committee and it was brought to my attention and then, well, I noticed to myself that supposed to give an annual report, I haven't been doing that, so this will be the first annual report out of three, so. Not, not do it, so anyway, so I wanted to just take a couple of minutes to kind of go over this, there should be a copy of the ordinance in your packet, if we wanted to, we could go ahead and just kind of give a review for some and an overview for some of you that have not been involved in this. This was kind of put together back in 2020, it was originally a roads committee for the roads and that, well, it didn't take long for the council, let everybody realize that, you know, the water roads and all the public work infrastructure kind of dovetail together, so it was changed over to a public works committee at that time. During that time, there was a lot going on, we had, you know, the water project, the projects, we kind of, we were pretty busy and as, you know, as projects went along, so looking at my notes here, we, you know, worked with planning commission, one of our first accomplishments or recommendations there was working with planning commission to get some construction standards in for our public works, our roads, our water, and that was approved by the council sometime in 2020, which is our new, you know, which was our new construction and guideline and development standards that is American Public Works Association, Ted, who was at the company at the time, was pretty instrumental in helping us get that done. We've also worked with the engineer and the contractor on replacement and road. So actually benefited the project. And then that was, of course, like I said, with Ted and I can't remember the contractor's name all of a sudden, but we were able to, you know, work with them, get some stuff done that, we brought some value as a committee to that. On one of the other projects we worked on was working with Wayne on some of the water right updates that I think we've gotten, we've worked a while before, excuse me, it's been a while since anything was actually done with the water rights, we were able to kind of bring them up to speed, so we're a little bit up on our water rights. And, you know, again, thanks to Wayne on that, he put a lot of hard work in on that one. And current projects that the committee is working on are, well, Jones and DeMille is actually working on a city drainage project with Salem and Utah County. Mylan Malkovich is working on a subcommittee with Utah State University, this is a separate project from what Wayne is doing, but it is working more on drainage issues we're challenged with up on upper end of the city here, Broad Hollow being one, Spring, I think we're all pretty aware of it. And the hope is, is we can come up with some low-cost solutions that might dovetail into the bigger citywide drainage program. So we're hoping to see the, again, the capstone folks at Utah State are working on that and they've, they've got some pretty good folks on that, so hopefully something will become of that. The other project we're working on, and I've been working with Ben on that, is we have been talking about the solid waste collection, now, what we talked about doing with that, oh, he's here, just in time, no problem, oh, we were just talking, the guy who lives the closest is always the last one to show up. So anyway, I was just, so anyway, working with Ben a little bit on that, talking a little bit about that, we, we kind of get some, some benchmarks along there, I don't have that list of benchmarks, but I do, remember, the main one is storage, you know, what are we going to do with the, with the trucks and the equipment if we get into this business? Where are we going to put it? You know, I think until we can solve that problem, that's kind of where we're kind of putting it on hold and Ben may be able to shed some light on that. So, right now, the biggest challenge that we see on the solid waste is storage, we've been challenged with storage, as I'm sure you've heard from Corbett over the last couple of years, what, you know, how much more issue is that going to be if we're trying to get garbage trucks in there too? So we would definitely need to solve that issue or before we could even move forward with anything else, so that, that's kind of where we're at on, on the current projects. The committee is made up of six residents, you can follow along with your, it's made up of six, six residents, we are currently down to three, and then we also have the two liaisons and then we have three members from the city and the staff would be in Corbett, the snowplow driver as well as planning commission, so that's a total of eleven folks that were on that. Being down to three, we're still eight, so we're still a pretty good size group. Again, we were really busy when we first got this policy, or this policy to create this committee into place. Things slowed down a little bit, we were meeting monthly and that was almost not enough, to the point where we started going down to quarterly, and even after, with quarterly meetings, found ourselves trying to make things up, and to the point, I just wanted to keep the momentum going by, by having meetings, so that was the reason with the quarterly. And since then, we've dropped, I mean, our last meeting was in August, and we've simply, you know, waiting, other than waiting for Utah State for some follow-up on the, on the projects with the wastewater, or not wastewater, stormwater, excuse me, we're, we've really got nothing to talk about, so we really kind of lost our momentum on that, which is, you know, something we probably need to discuss. The other thing, on the policy on the page, we talked about working with, you know, let me see, the, you know, with the city infrastructure, we work with developers, contractors to ensure conformity with city goals. One thing we really didn't have onboard that time was a city engineer, we had our engineering firm that we were working with, but they weren't really dedicated to the city, that was kind of a city developer, city engineer type of, type of thing. So I think if we start looking forward, that we need to probably work with engineering as projects come along too, so I would suggest maybe we add that to the policy if we, if we wanted to. You know, the, the, it was broke down into, what, five, four, excuse me, four committees, being the roads committee, the, the water subcommittee, sewer subcommittee, parks and trail subcommittee, and then the general works committee, so there's four, three subcommittees and then the fourth general works committee. Parks and trails, I wanted to talk a little bit about that, we, since this was put in place, the council has created its own parks and trails committee, I'm just wondering if we need to duplicate their effort or how we would work with them, I think that's something we ought to address is, you know, is that needed on the public works committee at this point? You know, I just, you know, do we run parallel paths, separate paths, work together? At this point, I think maybe, you know, they're doing pretty good and if they need some advice or input from us, we can give it to them, sure.
Did you have some people that kind of were over that?
Well, yes, under, under the ordinance, the planning commissioner represented the parks and trails committee on, on the public works committee, so that was, that was kind of what his role was, I'd still like to keep him on no matter what we do, yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I'm going to go back to something I've said multiple times, I really don't like the term trails because it's just too generic. Are we talking woodland trails, you know, hiking trails, are we talking trails alongside roads, what are we talking about? And I think what I understood, the committee was meant, the public works committee trails were really those that were just beside the roads, that were more like sidewalks, although not sidewalks, but just kind of extra trails alongside roads, as opposed to the hiking trails, more woodland kind of trails, which I don't think, I think that belongs with the, with the parks and trails committee.
Okay, so, so I think what I.
So I separate those two.
You're thinking about just separating two, so you would, what I think I'm hearing you say is, we probably ought to keep the parks and trails committee, subcommittee on here, which is, which breaks, but, you know, that doesn't really, the parks really doesn't fit into what you just described.
Right, no, I'm not saying that we keep parks and trails committee on there, I think, I think we separate those two ideas. The parks and trails committee that we currently have, that is separate from the public works, I think they do a great job of.
Agreed.
Moving forward the agenda of having nice recreational kind of hiking things. I think the purpose of having it on the public works committee is so that as we build new road, we can evaluate and look at getting.
Trail easements.
Trail easements alongside that road so that we can build trails.
Okay, that, that makes sense, if, I mean, if that's what we want to do, so, so part, sub- paragraph F of, F of this policy talks about the parks and trail subcommittee, so would we want to just relieve, remove the parks portion of it?
Actually, I think the best thing would be to remove it to get all together.
Okay.
And then just start working with the roads aspect and evaluate our current road standards and can we possibly start changing those road standards such that we can get trails alongside roads.
So, the infrastructure alongside the road trails and stuff like that would be rolled into the roads portion of this committee.
Well, FC, to work with developers to ensure the city trails follow the general plan, that was basically the idea that we would have developers have a park and trail plan in their development. One of the things, a lot of people want trails, but we don't have easements on property prior to it being planted. So part of that is, okay, if we're putting in other infrastructure and its development, do we, do we have a mechanism or a group that then oversees and makes sure that those easements are in place?
And I don't know that we need to answer these questions tonight by any means, but I think it's just, just a question I wanted to just kind of bring up is where do we go from here with that, and so far, we've got some excellent ideas, so that, what you folks decide is great, and I'd be glad to bring any input that I, that I can or that you would want from me to help with that. So, that was kind of where I was at on the parks and trails. Either way. Wayne, our planning commission chairman is, you know, if he's on this committee to oversee that, regardless, I really want to keep him on the committee even if we have to reassign him as, as a citizen if he's, if he's willing.
He just wants to go to one more meeting, we're happy.
Yeah, he loves it.
He does love it.
And again, as I said earlier, we, we really have a lot to discuss over the last year or so, just, you know, you guys, you know, I understand you guys have had a lot of other priorities, so kind of wanted to look at that. So the other thing we've, we've done, and again, an attempt to keep the movement going and as part of, to follow the guidelines from this policy, is we, over the last couple of years, have kind of devised some priorities we feel are important for public works. There, we haven't done anything this year, a lot of them are from last year, I don't know how many of them have been approved or received attention, but I'd just kind of go over a couple of them again real quick, and I apologize if I talk about stuff that we've already, well, working on as a council. The, the things that we've talked about were, you know, completion of the Broad Hollow well, and let me stop there, the reason I'm bringing this up is, you guys are going into budget session and, you know, we're trying to keep the cost, some of the priorities we talked about in the past were pretty pricey, we've kind of eliminated them, we did try to attach some budget numbers to these priorities in the past, but there was a lot of disconnect between all that, so we have, I haven't put any budget numbers on this, I do have some of the budget numbers, if we need to, I'd be more than happy to bring them to you, or at least bring them to the finance committee so that they can look at them, and that would also help with the priorities, but there's no budget numbers on any of these right now, but they're all reasonably priced, there's no real big ticket items except for the last one, which you guys are already addressing. So, we do need to complete the Broad Hollow well, there's, it's mostly done, the biggest challenge we have that, and Corbett can bring it to my, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, is we're going to need to get, eventually get three-phase power up there, you know, that's going to be a little bit pricey, so that's probably going to be the largest big-ticket item. I had mentioned earlier that Corbett and Wayne both have been, you know, did a great job of getting the water rights up to speed. I think this is ongoing, something we need to continue to do as we, as the community grows, we're going to have to start looking at transferring water, what are we going to do with the water rights we have, what are we going to do with the water rights we're going to acquire? I think we just need to keep our eye on that ball, so I think that's very important that we would do that, and if we need to set, when I say we, I'm saying the community as a whole, under your, under your guidance, so that's a loose term, I say we, what I think we need to do is maybe just set some money aside, you know, a couple of thousand a year, you know, just as, as a, as a fund, so when we start looking at having to redo the water rights, we have the money there and we don't need to find. Well monitoring, this is one that the mayor and I talk a lot about, you know, and what I'm looking at here is, you know, we're looking twenty years out, not five, ten years out, twenty years out, so that the people that are sitting here, which is unlikely to be any of us twenty years from now.
Not me.
The roads, huh? Yeah.
The mayor is still there.
I've already got my daughter sending me lots in Texas saying, Dad, it's time for you and mom to move down here, so I doubt I'll be here that long either, so, but, you know, as we start looking at, you know, at not only water rights, you know, water capacity, we're kind of, we know how much water we're using, but we really don't know how much water we have. I think we're in good shape, but we just don't know, it's kind of like driving down the road, knowing, not knowing exactly how much water's, or how much gas is in your gas tank, so I kind of think that we ought to kind of keep looking at that, there's some, you know, there's some things we can do that are very inexpensive, that'll, that'll bring some value to it, and there's some things we can do that cost a lot of money. The biggest challenge I see with this, with water monitoring, is we're not the only ones going to be using this, you know, you've got the whole south part of the valley, you know, it's going to be Salem, Spanish Fork, Payson, probably Santa Claus Ocean. The research I've done, I found one study that was done back in the nineties. That focused mostly on Santa Claus Ocean, and what the water situation was, it's, again, it's a thirty-year-old study, they really didn't include us. I also had a gentleman I worked with, with UGS, his name is Hugh Harlow, he is the groundwater chief scientist for the Utah Geological Survey, I had a talk with him a while back and we talked a lot about this, and he sees the need, but he also understands the expense and the challenges that would go along with it, but he, he was not aware of any studies that were done either. I tried reaching out to the local water agency to see if they had anything, I have not heard back from them, so that, so that's where we're at, so I think that for the short-term at least, we can do some well monitoring, when I'm saying, you've got the, you've got the probes that are in the well, and then we've got a couple of extra wells that are, they're just dry wells, or not dry wells, but there's nothing in them, they're just empty wells, I've got, you've got a couple down by the Broad Hollow, or one up by the Broad Hollow, a couple down by the, is it Maple Canyon? Yeah, no, by Salt Shed, that we could actually just buy a sounder probe, that's probably a thousand dollars, you can just drop it down and just record it every once in a while.
Are you saying we still have water rights there that are usable water rights for actual water, because I was talking, I was in a meeting not too long ago and the state engineer was there and he was saying there's these little wells all over that people had in their, their homesteads, their farms, and, and because they haven't been used, then those water rights now, especially in the drought, have been kind of like sucked up someplace else.
As a municipality or as a water district, a public water service district, you have some advantages that the private well owners don't have, and one of those can be, we're talking about point of diversion and point of use, okay? As a municipality, we can set our point of use as the boundaries of our city, of our service area, and we can set the point of diversion as all sources within that area, so we can, we can actually set it up, put it any way we want, so we can use all the water in one well or, or the other and we can use it anywhere, so we have that advantage as a municipality.
So we have both paper water and actual water on all of those sources?
Correct, yes, it's the same, it's the same, same paper waters, it's just going to be used in all those sources, you can, you can't use this much on this source and that, you have to, you can split it up.
Right. Just wanted to make sure we had actual water coming out before, because that's one, isn't that one of the reasons we abandoned that one in the bottom, is there just wasn't enough watering? I mean, that's been a long time ago. Yeah.
But, but where I was going though is, you can take and, when you, you know, you can draw the water out of the wells, there's monitors in the wells, I know for sure we got one in our broad, the Broad Hollow well, and there makes no sense that we wouldn't have one in the Maple Canyon, so we can watch the drawdown and the recharge on those as we're using it. With these other wells, we can go ahead and, because they're away from the actual well a little bit, there'll be, won't be, the water changes won't be influenced quite as much, and we can monitor those and see how they're trending, you know, on dry years, you know, how does water go down on wet years, how does it come up, does it take, you know, do we see a change, it would have been nice to have a little bit of history at this point, but we can still use the existing wells to say, okay, we had a wet year, this year, how long will we take for we notice that in the aquifer, if we do at all? That, that's the kind of information we need to help us make decisions down the road twenty, thirty years from now, so that we don't end up overbuilding and finding ourselves short of water, which a lot of communities are up against that, so that's something I think is important for the residents of this community twenty years from now, I'd hate to be a guy that, you know, spent a lot of money to move up here just to find out we don't have any water. Another priority that we set, and I know that we're working on it to a certain degree now, is sewer operations. We had, you know, we, we're working with Payson City, they were kind of doing some monitoring for us, and for whatever reason, it hasn't been happening, there's been some challenges on that, I know we're getting, kind of getting back on board. Unfortunately, sewer seems to be, seems to go unnoticed until it's noticed, and when it's noticed, it's, you know, you wish you had noticed it a lot longer, a lot sooner, so I think, you know, there's some small steps we can take just to make sure that we don't have challenges with, with the, with the sewer system. The, just a side note on that, something that I've talked about we can do, I've done in the other organizations that I've worked, worked, worked for, is a maintenance and operations manual, basically what that would be is, you know, how do you operate the well, where are all the valves and everything, how often do we check, you know, the sewers, what we need to do, it would be something we can develop, and, and I get it, Corbett's very busy right now and that's probably not something that he's going to have a lot of time to do, you know, I, I'm willing to help out as much as I can, you know, I'm, I'm willing to help, but I'm not looking for a job, so it's just, there's a fine line there.
A free job too.
Pardon?
A free job.
It, nothing's free, it'll cost.
He doesn't want a paid job, he just wants a free job.
It'll cost me.
We, we understand that.
I'll, I'll make less money than I make on it, yeah, okay. And so I think that's something we can do, and again, for a couple of reasons, ten, twelve, twenty years from now, none of us are going to be here, how do we transfer the knowledge that we have? One, a manual like that is, is a very good way of doing that, and so you, you can say, oh, where was that PRV, what was that pressure supposed to be, and you can, you know, I'm just using quick examples, so that the folks that are here next can do, or, you know, as Corbett gets older, his memory's going to go, is anything like the rest of us. Another item that I think is, was very important, and I pushed this one on the priorities, is a safety plan. Now, I know we talked about incorporating a safety plan into our operation, our personnel manual, I don't know if it's there or not, I haven't seen it, if it is, great, if not, I think we need to look at it. One of our old city attorney's favorite statements was, it's all about the liability. I think we've kind of experienced some of those challenges about liability in the community ourselves, if, if we have a plan that's in place, we have some defense if somebody gets hurt, if we don't, we're not quite as, what's the word I'm looking for? When you're.
Reliable.
Reliable wasn't the word, but that, that's close enough, we're not quite as liable, I was thinking of a different term, but that'll work. Those are kind of the priorities that we've narrowed down on the committee, and of course, David was part of that, and the other one, of course, and Corbett's been talking about that, and I see it's on the agenda tonight, is, you know, waste heat and vehicle storage. So those were pretty much the committees that are priorities, excuse me, that we've set over the last couple of years, that I'd like to go ahead and bring the attention and, you know, and as you start looking at the budget this year, what, you know, how will else fit onto the priorities? Another thing that has changed over, over, since, again, I mentioned it earlier, Jones and DeMille is now our. City engineer, contract engineer, we work a lot with them now and, and they're very good, Ted is, he's really sharp and his organization is really sharp. We've kind of been left out of loop as a committee on a lot of what's going on there, I'd like to find a way where we can at least be kept in the loop, and if we have anything to offer, great, but at least we know what's happening, so we're not questioning, oh, what's going on there, so I'd like to work with, with him on, you know, trying to make sure that the, the committee gets in the loop, and again, the fact that we're not meeting a lot right now is probably contributing to the fact that we're not in the loop.
So would you want Ted to attend your meeting to just have an update?
That was actually, that was, that was, I was just going to bring that up, so.
Well, at least get included in all of their emails, you know.
Well, I don't know, that might be.
Well, especially from Ted.
I think a little report, just to.
Well, I thought about, would it be nice to have him sit in all the meetings, the, the question I have on that is, you know, we're going to be billing hours, I don't know how much money we're going to have for billing hours to have him sit on that.
I actually am a little concerned about even thinking of going down that direction, I mean, Corbett is the public works person.
And maybe that's how we work.
Corbett should be the liaison between us and Ted.
And that may very well be the best solution to it, just as long as we get the information, that may be the best way to do it.
Need to make sure that we're holding meetings at times when Corbett can be there, so that he can fill the committee in on the priorities that are, that are moving forward, and then what help the committee can provide.
Again, these, you know, I'm kind of bringing up questions, we can work on, on the answers, and that's a very good solution to that, to that challenge. And then just, just the one last thing, you know, like I said, I can help with addressing these priorities, I've, I've been working with both Corbett and with Craig in the field with, with some projects anyway, you know, it's fun to get out, it's kind of nice, you can, you know, you're working with machines and you're working with dirt or whatever the case might be, there's no emotional content with that and I can deal with that, it's when it starts getting, so, and so I don't mind doing it, these guys, both of them are very good at what they do, I've been able to bring some of the stuff, some stuff to the table to help them, and quite frankly, I've learned quite a few things from them, so I think it's been very good for both of us, you know, when I have some time, and lately I've had a lot of time, I don't mind getting out and helping out, so that's kind of where I'm at on all that, and I think that pretty much is pretty much everything I want to discuss, any more questions or comments?
Well, Mark, thanks for everything, and I, I think the, what I would like to see done is, with respect to some of, you know, the items that you've presented, I would like to have some sort of a plan of attack, so I, like, with respect to the priorities, it seems to me that obviously money is a big consideration, you know, one, I think we want to try to order them in such a way that, you know, not that we reach for the low-hanging fruit, but, but maybe we start off with some of those that are a little less expensive and that, that we can really check off the list, and so what I would like to see is, is if we could get some, a, a decision with respect to which priorities, you know, the committee would like us to focus on.
And costs.
Yeah, and then those costs, then we can make an effort.
You know, utilities is what I know, I've been doing it for forty years before I retired, I, I was pretty good, I don't know if I still am, but not only was I good at it, I was very passionate about it, so fortunately, we had a lot of members on this committee that, while they're very sharp, weren't quite as passionate as I was about it, so we were able to temper a lot of my passion to try and bring these together to kind of get some more attainable goals in place, so.
And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but perhaps if we could maybe get like a couple of recommendations from the committee that, okay, well, this, these are the two things, because I, you know, I don't know that's realistic, a realistic, realistic for us to be able to knock all six priorities out in the upcoming budget year, but, but if we get two, then we're making progress, and hopefully the list isn't growing larger behind it, but that's a possibility.
What we can do is, I know you guys are starting the budget process, probably already have.
Oh, yeah.
I know you're, what we can do is. Um, I know you're, um, what we can do is I can, I can call a committee meeting and we can kind of go over this and maybe put some options on the table and present them to you here. We can run them through, through our liaisons and, and they can get them to the, uh, to the budget, uh, process through that.
That would be helpful.
Might be the best way. So I can look at, normally we, we try and have, uh, our meetings, our meetings on the first Tuesday of the month, which would be next Tuesday. I think we can get something together between now and next Tuesday. I'll go ahead and see if we can get something up. I'll get something to, uh, Jody tomorrow and see about having that.
Okay. I remember Jody's in Hawaii on vacation.
Actually, I remember telling her she was going to Hawaii on vacation. We do have a new, uh, deputy recorder now. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. I have not met her yet, so I can get it to her.
Oh, yeah. No, I, I was, I was mostly joking. I mean, I'm not joking about Joey.
Yeah. My neighbor just got back from Caribbean yesterday, last night. She says, yesterday my toes were in the water and now I got my Jeep stuck in the driveway.
Who goes to Hawaii but Dave can't go until the snow season's over?
Well, you can tell him that now. Maybe he'll come back.
David Stones, you have to stay until snow season's over.
Thanks, Mark. And then just as far as like to David's point, uh, with respect to, you know, if the committee can meet with, with Corbett, you know, meet at a time when, when Corbett can be there. Is that another?
We've always done that. We've moved, we used to do them on Wednesday. And that was one of the changes we made to move until Tuesday so that not only was that a good night for him to be there, but it also, uh, he wasn't out of hours for the meeting. Because that was the other challenges that he was running out of hours before we actually had the meeting.
Yeah, no, understood. All right. I was just thinking those two things, maybe if we can work on those, then we can advance the effort.
And thank you for all you do.
Hey, another problem. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, Ben, you gave it your best effort to avoid the dicey or topic, but unfortunately.
I jumped out of the shower and saw I had plenty of time, so I decided to shave and that put me over.
And then he had a snack and then he watched.
No snack, no snack, no YouTube.
We texted him, said, you awake?
Well, uh, so let's get back to item one, the leasing of the 2023, uh, snowplow, uh, trucks and equipment. So Janet, I think that, uh, if, if it's okay with you, I know that you're here on behalf of the finance committee. So can we get, uh, a summary of, of your report? And, and I also, I know that there are a lot of people, I, I don't, I don't know who you are. What, what's your name? Not, not Ben, you, the guy behind Ben. Rock. Okay. Are you here about the snowplows?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and then.
I'm Tristan Thompson and I, I'm here just for the.
Okay, but I, I just, what I think I'll do is, is we can just invite commentary from those that are here. I know that we've got a number of people online too. And that way you won't have to wait through the laborious next hour plus, uh, before we have the public hearing portion. So, all right, take it away, Janet.
Take it away, Janet. Okay. Um, so we, we talked about the snowplows and the options, um, in the finance committee. I know Dave, Dave's online. Um, Dave gave us an analysis. He did a breakdown. We all have that in our packet of a couple of different options and the costs. I think we, we should set aside a couple of key things, probably pretty quickly. There was some discussion even on your post about, uh, contracting it out again. And I think we should throw that out, that that's just not really an option. The reason that we went away from that is because there were so many citizen complaints and, um.
Well, and that there was, it wasn't an adequate service at all.
No.
The timeliness and the cost.
So it took them, um, when we had it contracted, it would take them, you know, anywhere from one to two, you know, hours to even respond. I, I talked to Chris about it. Chris is on here, but I asked him about it because, you know, he's been here forever. But, um, they would only plow from 7:00 AM until 11:00 PM. So if you needed to go somewhere early, you were out of luck. If you had a kid that worked, you know, a fast food job and got home at 11:30, they were out of luck. They couldn't get home. And so, um, we just had too many issues and the safety.
They were also out of Santaquin, which accounted for part of that delay in getting here. Plus there were a lot of times they wouldn't even have snow down there and we'd be getting plastered.
Yeah.
And so.
Or they'd say, we're not going to come up until the snow stops falling and that could be a couple of days.
Now, granted, that was a company. And it's possible that we could find a better company. But I will also point out that when we did put out that contract, they were the only company that even responded. And so it's, there's not a bunch of companies out there that do snow plowing for cities.
That are, yeah, and, and that would have enough equipment because you can't have one truck to do our city. I mean, you look at the amount of trucks we have now and we struggle to keep the roads clear. So, um, so that really, we did talk about it and, you know, as an option, but it's just not, right? But you kind of have to go through everything. Um, and then the other thing was, um, the trucks. So the leases on the trucks are three-year leases. And, um, everyone on the finance committee was in agreement that we need to lease two new trucks. And the biggest reason is, is because there's been, um, well, the biggest reason is, is because once the lease is up, they'll actually no longer be under warranty. So any of the expensive repairs that we've had have been mostly covered with the warranty on the trucks themselves. And those warranties are expiring. So, um, if we kept those trucks, we would have old trucks with no service plan and we would be footing the bill for all of that. Plus they would be unreliable. This last snowstorm, one of the trucks was down with transmission.
Can we be, uh, specific as to which truck? Was it one of the leased trucks that was down?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and, and the trucks, you know, admittedly Corbett will tell you and, and I even Ben and, and Craig that some of it is user error. Some things have happened with the trucks. One of the trucks got power washed under the hood. And now it has like electrical issues.
Both.
Both?
Yes. It was part of the process when we first got them, just in cleaning them. And we learned the hard way.
So, so both trucks definitely need to be, um, uh, replaced on the leases. That's not a new expense. We have leases now. We'll have leases on new trucks. So that's not a new expense. The issue is, is that the cost has increased, just like everything else. So our new expense is the increase in cost, uh, for those trucks.
What is that? What is the increase?
It's about 40%.
Because, yeah, in our, we've got the finance committee minutes.
But there's the, there's the breakdown too. It shows all the numbers.
Now, is that David's breakdown?
Yes. Um, so David, if you want to chime in, if you're on, you can at any time. You can interrupt me. I'm fine with that.
Let's get the finance committee's point of view on that, because I know Corbett's got a, a perspective and I know David does and probably others.
So we all discussed it and, um, it was, it was the consensus on the finance committee that we need two new trucks with all new equipment. Um, I was a little bit of a holdout on that because I wanted to explore taking all of the best of the equipment from one of the existing trucks and putting it on one of the new trucks just to save a little bit of money. But upon, um, further discussion all weekend long with different people, um, the trucks, the equipment itself is working fine now, but it is showing somewhere. There's been some, um, some issues. And, you know, that, that plow equipment probably is only going to last about another year. So I don't know. Um, so the finance committee is recommending two new trucks with all the equipment. That was, that was the consensus.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for that. Uh, any questions for Janet? Okay.
Yeah, I, I have one, but let me go back to the report so I can remember what it was. I started reading ahead of you while you were walking, while you were talking.
Yeah.
So all new equipment, um, just so that it, it's consistent in, in wear and tear. Um, it seems to me that maybe we've had some, some extra wear and tear. I mean, we're, we're, we're a mountain community. We don't have great roads. We have a lot of snow. But it appears to me that we've had more maintenance equipment, you know, maintenance, uh, and equipment failure. Is some of that just the wear and tear or is it operation, um, you know, misuse or, or some sort of damage because it's not being used properly? I guess I'm just wondering, I know our snowplow drivers get some training, but, you know, they're really not on the road until it snows. And so with that equipment and we, we've done the wear blades and we've done some other things to help. But is there any other way that we can do, make sure that the trucks aren't, oh, we didn't know that we couldn't do this? Or, oh, we sideswiped this or, oh, this and that, you know, those kinds of things? Is there anything we can do to help with just driver error?
Well, I think that would be, yeah. He's a plow driver.
And I was actually going to say David would be the one to.
He's got his hand up.
Yeah. All right, David, uh, will you answer Carrie's question?
And, and Jody wants us to make sure everyone who talks says their name out loud. So it's on the record for her when she does the minutes.
Especially David.
Yeah.
Hopefully you can hear me. If you can't, just say something.
We can hear you.
We can hear you. Okay. Yeah. So really quick, Carrie, great points. Part of the challenge is, is, uh, let's say six years ago, since I've been plowing, I think for six, seven years, is there was a whole plethora of different issues. Drivers would only plow for an hour or two during the year. So what we tried to do over the last few years is actually reduce the number of drivers. But to your point, it's a mountain community. There's some challenges with the roads for sure. And there are certain places where there's dips that if you're not, if you haven't been plowing for three years, you might hit that a little too fast. And when I say fast, it's probably 15 miles an hour. Or there are certain places, and I could, I could, I could go on and just pour you to tears if you actually want to be poured tears as to which part of the road will catch the blade. Like literally which part of the road and which angle your blade will be on to hit that. So I actually send out all kinds of messages to the drivers on a very regular basis as to which part of the road will catch the blade depending upon which direction they're going. So there's all kinds of stuff like that. So we actually have very few drivers, actually fewer than we used to have in the past. They drive very consistently. Um, but yes, the roads are a challenge. Uh, and so could we spend millions of dollars and have pristine roads and have better care of the trucks? Absolutely. But there is always a balance, right? I mean, do you, you know, bust a ram, do you explode a, uh, you know, hydraulic hose going five miles an hour? Do you drop the blade to the ground, um, going nearly at a stop, right? In certain parts of the city, yeah. And so as drivers, we, we, we know those places. We try to drive with care. And, um, as an example, if a new driver comes on, actually don't let them drive the bigger trucks. They have to start out doing call disaction, some of the simpler things until they can work up to it. So once again, I could go on and on and on. Um, so yes, Carrie, there are challenges with that. We try to mitigate that as much as we can. There is training. But at the same time, um, there are definitely some parts of the city that are more challenging than others that do cause some additional wear and tear to the trucks for sure.
Could we get an idea, how many miles have been put on these trucks?
Yes, about 10,000. And I would say that they are very, very rough 10,000 miles. There are certain parts, oh, yeah. I mean, it's just, you're plowing a lot of snow, you're pushing, uh, you know, you have a blade down. A lot of times you're dropping salt. You have a lot of weight sometimes in the back with the salt. But about 10,000 miles, uh, what I would say is that they've, they've been put on over the last three years. And most of that's probably through plowing for sure.
All right. Thank you, David. Um, so unless, um, there are more questions for David specifically. I, I know, and Janet, this is to your point too, you know, there, there are some that advocate. And, and I appreciate, uh, those that are looking to save money. Philosophically, I think that I support the all new equipment, all new accessories. But Corbett, I, I would like to, uh, give you an opportunity to address, uh, the council and, and share your point of view on that. And then David, I'd like to come back to you and have you present, uh, the, uh, the counterpoint on that. And, and hopefully that will give each of us, uh, uh, you know, a, a, a nice, uh, full, uh, spectrum picture of the decision before the council. So Corbett? Well, I, I, I guess you could exit if you wanted to.
Only if you want to make Jody's life easier.
No, I, well, I, I, I don't think that it is intended to be adversarial. I just, I, I think that it, it, it is worth listening to. You know, you, you raised some, some points that I think are valid. And, and so I don't, I don't think that it's a matter of, of concession, but, but I think that, you know, the, the council would benefit from hearing your perspective on it. If you would. Just so we can shoot you down. No, I'm just joking.
So I, I guess my approach is don't throw the baby out with the bathwater kind of a thing. But it doesn't, it's not just, it's not that simple. Because in order to use the current equipment for the next lease period, you have to buy the current trucks. So you have to buy out the lease and then take the equipment off that you want and then sell the truck. And so it's not just a simple, you know, use the current equipment because the current equipment, we don't own it. And in order to use that equipment, we would have to purchase the trucks outright.
Because they're part of the lease on the old ones, right?
The, the equipment is part of the old lease?
Yes.
And I didn't.
The equipment, the equipment came with the truck. And that's what the lease is, is for the truck and the equipment that's on the truck.
You're saying we'd have to buy out all of that and then we would be able to sell that?
Well, we'd have to buy the old equipment and then sell the truck without it, right?
Correct. And then we'd have to get a new lease for the same type of truck. Well, the trucks, the trucks are the exact, the, the trucks are the exact same truck. They're just three years newer. The frame hasn't changed. The motor hasn't changed. It's just brand new instead of three years old.
New trucks, you would like to use the new trucks, but you take off the equipment that we're already leasing and reuse it with the new trucks.
But there's, again, there's strings attached to that. That means you got to buy the current trucks. You got to buy the current lease out.
Try to sell them.
And then take the equipment off that you want and then sell the rest of it.
Which we may want to do anyway, whether we keep the old equipment or not. I mean, I, I think that there is a real advantage to considering buying out the residuals on those leases and then selling the trucks. Uh, and, and getting some revenues as a result of that.
Right.
But so that, I, I mean, we might want to do that. I think we should anyway. But, uh, it, it's, it's something that would potentially be part of the decision in either direction.
And it, that's, and that's because there's the potential to make a little bit of money in the difference, which could offset the cost of the new leases. So if we could sell them, um, we would make a little bit more than what it would be to pay off the leases.
What I think I'm hearing you're saying is the value of the current trucks is more than the residual of lease buyback.
Yeah, yeah. Now, Mark, I'm going to hold, if you're going to speak, you got to sit in Corbett's seat.
But you, but, but we have to sell them, right? We'd have to be able to sell them as they are. So.
But it, again, my understanding is that to break even would be a very easy prospect. And the likelihood of us being able to make some money on it is, is good.
So to make sure we're getting the numbers correct, you're saying that there's a 40% increase. Is that just the trucks? Or is that plus the package?
Let Chris answer that. Chris?
I'm here. Sorry. Uh, Dave, you want to answer that? I think Dave just threw his hand up real quick.
Oh, he did.
Yeah. Sorry. I started to lose battery power after like 10 minutes of this thing. So just real quick on that and just to, maybe to, to put a finer point on, on Corbett's, uh, comments. Um, I actually looked at a ton of different options and Corbett and I, and maybe I even came up with some of these ideas as well. Because for me, it's to make the best decision, you need to have as much information as possible. So buying the trucks, um, is certainly an option. And at the same time though, um, I'm not sure who I use this analogy with, might have been the finance committee. Is recently I've actually soured on that and I'll tell you why. Very specifically, if we were to do a Carfax on those two trucks, or if somebody's going to buy those two trucks, they're going to do research onto the history, they're having more and more issues. And that's going to come out in whatever report they run. And the truck that, uh, we looked at before, um, that's, by the way, that truck is still on sale, still up for sale. So while I thought it was a great idea and I still do in many respects, I just wonder if there is a heightened risk due to the issues that these trucks are, have had and are having. So just maybe the, just a word of caution, not saying it's not a, a good idea to try, to do it or try it, to help cover some of the costs moving forward. But I just, I did want to make a comment on that if, if that's was all right.
But if I understand correctly, I mean, we could try, we could put them up.
Absolutely. Yep.
And we have until the lease is up to try.
Yeah.
So we, we would have a window of time where we would basically bear little to no risk.
Right.
At least keep.
Because you know the buyout amount now.
Yeah.
I'm assuming, okay.
Yeah. So we could give it a go and see if we could do it.
And then if it didn't sell, then we could turn it in.
Okay. So good. Question that I have, and this probably for David. So I'm looking at the, the spread, well, I don't know what to call it. It's not a spreadsheet.
Awesomeness.
Information that we were given.
Awesomeness.
So we see option one, we see turnkey with flatbed at 25,630. Is that the cost of a single truck on a three-year lease or is that the cost of both trucks on?
Is that the cost of a single truck on a three-year lease or is that the cost of both trucks on three-year leases?
No. So I separated them out. Option one actually has two different trucks. Granted, um, I just kinda did that as to, do we need to dump beds? Um, is there a platform that could also be used in a, you know, another versatile manner to reduce some costs? So that's, the reason I, I did that one, David, is, is just to reduce some cost. Um, doesn't mean that both couldn't be dumped. But the dump bed obviously adds an amount.
Okay.
I just, yeah.
So it's using the option of the truck for different reasons.
Hold on, let's, let's do one at a time.
I'm getting back to the question that was asked. What's the 40% increase? So how much are the, how much is the new lease for the trucks? Is that 25,630 or is that the 3917 if we went with the dump truck?
So Chris, do you have the exact numbers from the bank? I was extrapolating based upon the prior lease and the prior lease is purchase. And the new purchase, and then I extrapolated. So Chris, if you have the exact numbers, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I do. I'm just trying to find them right here. I, so the current leases are, they're just over 25,000. The trucks we have today, the new trucks would just, just be shy of 31.
And is that for two trucks or one each?
Each, each truck.
And it's a $31,000 lease. And is that over three years or is that?
Per year.
Per year.
Per year.
Per year. And we currently divide it up between different, um, departments.
Right. I, I get that. But okay, so we're, we're basically talking $90,000.
Yeah. If you look at the three-year cost, it's 109,551 and 91,289.
Okay.
Over the three years for, for each truck. Oh, yeah.
So is that 31,000 including accessories?
Yes.
Or just the truck?
That's, that's everything.
Okay, perfect. That's what I need to know. Thank you.
Okay. So now I'd like to jump back. So Corbett, you, uh, you were saying though, with respect to keeping the existing plows and spreaders. So you, you see that there is some value in that. I don't know if you feel that you, uh, gave all the information that you have, but if, if there's more that you want to share with the council.
Well, I, I don't, I don't think that we've ever, and I know that's pretty all-inclusive, but I don't think we've ever had any issues with the plows and spreaders that weren't operator error. I mean, again, you hook up to a plow and you, and you, you set it down and you back away from it and the plow comes off because it wasn't attached. And when it came off, it, it tore off hydraulic hoses off the cylinders, the hydraulic cylinders. That's operator error. And you're not gonna fix that even with a brand new plow.
So Corbett, then with the used equipment that we have and, and knowing that we've had operator error, are they at the standard that we would need to continue operating efficiently and effectively?
I think so.
Have they been repaired enough to be able to continue to use for three years?
Well, again, we pull a hydraulic hose off and with it comes the hydraulic fittings in, out of the ram, tears the threads out of the, out of the hydraulic cylinder. And we repair it.
But I think that is carried. That's the big question. It's like, you know, do we, do we wanna, do we wanna, well, this is kind of a, I'm putting a spin on it. Do we want to roll the dice and hope that the equipment has three more years in it? Or do we want to just start with brand new accessories?
And the accessories are the plows, the, the, um, spreaders, the cameras and lights, all of those types of things?
Just the plow, the spreader and the hydraulic wet kit, the hydraulics on the truck itself.
Okay. Now going back just a second, what, kind of following up on David's, uh, well, both Davids, I guess. Um, with option one, with one truck being a dump truck and one being a flatbed, because we're gonna be using them for off-season things. Do you have a preference on that?
I, 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 I don't think there's any use for a dump bed or for a flatbed. So if you're gonna put a flatbed on it, just save the money altogether and don't even put a bed on it. And put the plot or the spreader right on the frame.
But we use those trucks in the summertime too. So would it be more?
Dump trucks.
As dump trucks.
So.
No.
You would rather us purchase two dump trucks again, like we have before and not go with the flatbed option?
Then we could use them more in the summertime and the, the off-season.
Yeah. I mean, you can only use it for as many drivers as you have, but.
Okay.
Yes, correct.
Okay. Thanks, Corbett.
You're gonna still be here in case we think of another question about that used equipment?
All right, David.
Yeah. Um, so I think Corbett made a really good point. So just to, just to add to that, every single driver that's ever driven these trucks, uh, whether it's the big orange truck, the service truck, these, these trucks, the prior trucks, there are gonna be issues. There's just no if, ands or buts about it. Call it driver error, call it whatever you want. Um, there's gonna be issues. And, and that is just the nature of it. And whether you have somebody doing a U dot plow, they're gonna do the same thing. It's a, it's a tough, it's a tough thing to do. I'll just tell you that. And if somebody forgets to disconnect after 10 hours of plowing, you know, um, I'm not gonna make an excuses for that. But at the same time, uh, to Carrie's question, and to answer it this way, over the last three years, uh, there's been very, very few problems with the plows or spreaders. It doesn't mean there hasn't been, right? Um, but what I can tell you from experiences that are, that are older plows and spreaders certainly had exponentially more problems and they continue to do so. So you're not rolling the dice. I can only tell you what the dice are gonna come up as. They're gonna come up as exponentially more problems if you get used or you, you, or you used. So that's, I don't know how to, you know, make that more, um, you know, how to be more, I don't know, emphatic about that, but just thought I'd mention that.
Still only three years old, right?
Well, but that's, it's a hard business. I guess that's really, I mean, that's really the question in my mind. And it kinda goes back to where you were initially.
Yeah.
Is, wait a minute, the plow, okay, so David's now talking about the plow that's on the service truck and, maybe even the international. I mean, those are very, very old pieces of equipment. So of course they're gonna have a lot more problems.
Only since we started not having a contract. And that's not that many years ago. Is it? I mean, we started, we, we snowplowed first 10 years I lived here. So we can't be in this 10 years yet. Right? We haven't snowplowed for 10 years, have we, Chris? Well, you bought his equipment?
No, Steve. Steve Lorson, when he was mayor.
Okay, Corbett, you gotta, you gotta speak into the microphone.
You just gotta come sit here. Just walk the red carpet. But that's, that's what I'm saying. The ones now, there's no problems because they're still relatively new, right? Like there hasn't been a lot of issues.
Well, but also be careful comparing the old plows to the new plows because the old plows are electric over hydraulic, which means there's an electric motor on the front of the plow. The current, the new trucks, the mid-sized trucks, they're strictly hydraulic. And so the hydraulics or the controls for the plow, what runs the plow is built into the truck, not self-contained in the plow itself.
So can we get a feel for what are the problems that we've had with the plow part, not the truck?
The old ones or the new ones or what?
Yeah.
The ones we've been using, these leaks.
What are the issues we're having with the plows?
You run into a sewer manhole and it breaks welds. You hit a, you hit somebody's driveway. I mean, we changed the ordinance to require driveways to slope away from the road, right? Because when you hit a driveway with a plow, you bend truck frames. And if you bend it, if you can bend a truck frame, you can break welds on a plow. And we've done that before.
But Corbett, are, are the old plows, are they more brittle? I mean, okay, so there's, there's potential. So I, I, I think that what you're asking, David, is like, if, if we're comparing, you know, the plows that we've had for a long time, I mean, what are the problems and would those problems be?
So, so if you don't mind me, let me, let me jump in for a second, cause I, cause I drive these things a lot. Okay? So I'm gonna speak from experience. At the beginning of the season, when you lift the blade on number one, I'm just gonna give you a very classic experience. Okay, you lift the blade and it could go side to side, no popping. Most of the time now, when I start the truck and, and move those blades around, they're popping. So they are going to have more problems. They are already having more problems. They will continue to have more problems. And I wanna, I wanna kinda also emphasize this, as plow drivers, we are, uh, looking at the safety of everybody. We wanna get in and plow. We, this is not a matter of whether Corbett or Craig can fix these things. They absolutely can. I have utter confidence in their ability to fix something that breaks. It's actually, I don't want them to be fixed. I don't, I don't, I don't want, I don't want to have to have the need to call Corbett in the middle of the night. And that has actually happened very, very little uh, with these, with these trucks, but they are having more problems. These, you know, the plows, and it's just, it's just a reality. Uh, you know, like I think I mentioned this before, you, you drive a car, you let your kids drive it for a little bit and you get it back. It's like, wait a second, why, why am I hearing now a different sound? That's happening with these plows. And I, I can only say that from my experience, right? Cause I get it in pretty much every night about midnight, drive it for six hours. And, um, I just know, I can feel the difference in these plows. I can feel the difference in the, the way things are responding. And, uh, I don't know a better way to put it, um, cause I'm in them all the time.
And so I'm going back to, um, the spreadsheet, just trying to understand the information. If I'm looking at this correctly, we're, we're really talking $19,000 per truck is the difference because that's, uh, that's the cost of the dump and 10-foot HD plow.
What's the hydraulic, right?
Oh, the hydraulic kit?
David, are you asking for what the turnkey is or for building one? We can't, we can't.
Well, I'm, I'm, so I'm.
Maybe what the difference is in the cost.
Pretty, I'm, I'm asking a pretty simple question. I'm, I'm trying to compare what Corbett's proposing of, like if we were to buy the trucks, sell the truck, keep the plow and the, the accessories necessary, and then reuse those accessories on new trucks. I think that's.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
That's what I would call option one. And then option two would be buy all new.
Yeah. So that's not the way that I did it in my spreadsheet, but I'm just, once again, I don't have that in front of me, so.
Okay. Did you do it as option two or?
Yes.
How, how should I be, what terminology should I be using?
You can use anything you want. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, nor am I gonna go home and get my computer.
Come on, Dave.
So, so if, so if you, if you, to, to use the current equipment, you'd have to buy, to buy the current leases out.
Yep.
You're also, and Corbett knows some of these things exactly. I just, I just did some extrapolations based upon numbers provided, you know, by Corbett and others. Uh, if you buy a dump bed, that's 24,000 or 20,000. Anyway, about $20,000, a wet kit is $24,000. So the city council, from a budgetary perspective, would actually have to approve more money in the first year, actually quite a bit more money than approving, uh, two leases of a turnkey. So, cause you would all, you would still be leasing, right? You're still gonna be leasing something. On top of that, then you're gonna have the expense of buying the current trucks. You're gonna have the expense of a wet kit, you know, the expense of dump beds. So, uh, I can't remember exactly where I showed all that. I'm not sure if that was option three, David, like to, to.
Yeah, we don't have an option three.
Okay. All right. Um, so just realize that, that from a council perspective, your decision certainly has, you know, a bunch of different options for sure. But, um, if you are talking using used with new, there are costs associated with that. That's what I guys wanted to point out.
I'm, I'm just trying to, again, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I don't think this is a difficult question. I just am trying to find out what are the actual number differences between the options.
Finance committee, we were told it's about a 30,000. Is that about right?
Each per truck?
30 per truck is what I understand.
30 per truck is what I understood would be the difference. Over three years, yeah.
Each year, 30,000 each year or three, 30, so 10,000, 10,000 each year more.
No, 60,000 total.
Cause two trucks.
20,000 more.
Right. But 10,000 each truck for three years.
Right.
Yep.
And see my, my, well, my projections actually, if you're talking into the capital outlay upfront, and granted, it depends how much you can sell the, the ones you buy for, right? That certainly plays in. But all the options and numbers that I ran is used and new is more expensive over the course of three years when you're talking about actual costs. Because you still have to approve those costs upfront. They don't just, it's not free, right? I mean, those are, those are costs you have to incur upfront. And, and then you're also gonna be incurring actual increased costs over the course of the three years. Now, subsequent years, it might be a little cheaper per year, but not, certainly not in that first year. So that has to be accounted. That has to be spread across the other two years.
So Doral's been waiting patiently to ask this question.
I'm itchy to find this out. When you buy new and, and get both the plow and the truck, is the plow covered by any warranties as well? So say whether we should have a major break on something on a plow, is, I don't think they're warranted at all, are they? Or, or does that, does that add into my, my thinking that a new plow is better since it's?
So Doral, here's, I don't have the answer. I'll tell you what I don't have. I've actually asked that question multiple times. There is certain warranty elements of it. At the same time, they say you have to drive it within certain conditions, right? So, but since they, so let's say that this, if, if you blow a ram, um, that's not covered. And so you, you, while you're, while you're leasing the entire thing is, is some of those things, if you blow a hydraulic hose, that's not covered, right? There are certain pieces of the system that are covered, but not those pieces that based upon, uh, use, uh, would potentially be, have, have problems. But yes, there are, there are warranted pieces.
What we break on those are not covered.
Okay, well, that's.
I have, I have a question for.
That's right.
I have a question for Chris. So it was kind of said that it's 40% increase. So we've already been leasing the trucks with new equipment the last three years. Is that correct? And so if we choose this option one to rent them, I mean, lease them again with all new equipment, how much is that a difference, um, per, per month or per year per truck for the three years?
About just over $400 a month per truck.
Just so.
So 10, about 11, $12,000 a year. Total.
So another thing to think about as we're driving, the, the impact and wear and tear on these vehicles gets worse and worse, the deeper the snow gets, right? So like right now out there, like especially on those homes that are in cul-de-sacs, that's where it's the worst because we have to keep hitting that snow because we're pushing it into the cul-de-sac. And sometimes if it's a full cul-de-sac, meaning there's homes all the way, all the lots are built on, we've only have like three spots in that cul-de-sac we can push it. And so an element of this, just from a residential looking at us as we're driving standpoint is it can look like we're just beating the tar out of these vehicles when we're actually using the, the trucks, the way they're designed to hit, right? So, but it's important to just understand that as the, the snow does, the, the potential for maintenance will increase. Um, because like, for instance, there's something, like today I was going through a cul-de-sac and it was narrow, it was tight because there's five feet of snow on both sides of the road and it's almost a single lane. And I'm close and I just have to hit it. And I have to hit it hard to throw the snow so that that person can get out of their driveway. Right? Yeah, Carrie.
So I, I, I mean, I think about where I live in the corner and the snow is really deep. And it, it's piled up, it's melted a little and then it freezes and we get more snow. And so it's like an ice wall and you're hitting that all the time. I was talking to a mayor in another city that gets a lot of snow like we do, um, a couple of days ago and asked them what they do to widen the roads and et cetera on these big piles. And they said, when the days it's not snowing, instead of just widening, widening it by pushing it, they actually bring in, um, like their backhoe and put it into the dump truck and haul it away and dump it someplace in the city. And is that an option for us to, so that we don't have to keep pushing, pushing, pushing?
Not if you buy a flatbed.
We, we've already got a solution for that, right? I mean, we use the big orange truck to widen the roads and then we do have, I mean, if we wanted to manually.
But even at that, the orange truck, the orange truck has limitations too.
Right.
I mean.
Well, tell them about what you were doing today.
But we do have a solution for those sorts of scenarios, I think. Cause I mean, we, we could haul it.
Push against the ice.
But on Pine View, the other night when I came home, it, it hadn't been plowed at all, all day long. And there were like almost three feet and some, but you, you were there for a while, but somebody was there like most of the night, just trying to clear out Pine View and just kinda working sections of it and just hitting at it for forever. Was that you that was there all night?
Well, I was there till about nine o'clock and then Clint Mauer, we brought the skid steer up and did it with a skid steer.
Cause I mean, I heard people out there working all night long. Okay.
Yeah, Janet, and to Corbett's, yeah, to Corbett's point right there, I think that's a good option. So I think Corbett tried to mention that, uh, the, the big orange truck can only do so much, can only get into so many places, right? So I think Corbett tried to mention that the, the big orange truck can only do so much, can only get into so many places, right? So this year has been a tough one. And you almost have to start using things like the skid steer or the Kubota to widen. And because to your point, Carrie and Janet, it's that, it's that ice. And no matter what we do, even for the big truck Is, that becomes an ice block, almost impossible to move. So you almost have to methodically say, okay, in between storms, we should probably take more time using Almost like a, you know, tractor, kind of an apparatus, if you will, to try to either pick it up and then dump it further back off the road or something. This, this has been a tough year. There's no offense or buts about it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any resident of Woodland Hills who would disagree with you, Dave.
They can come visit me if they want. They can actually come here. And I'm not looking forward to flying back on Saturday.
Well, David, we're excited to have you fly back. So, so I've spent a lot of time asking a lot of questions. I started, I'll just be fully transparent here. I, I started fully on, let's not throw the baby out, right? It doesn't make sense. From my experience, now granted, I've only plowed for a year now, or this season. And, but it is also the biggest season we've had in, in recent time. And so I feel like we've never, you know, to, to Corbett's point. I never have seen any of our, of the two plows that we're talking about. I'm not talking about any of the other plows, just the leased plows. They've never been down because the spreaders had issues or the plows had issues. And so I called Craig yesterday and talked to Craig for about thirty minutes. And he explained a few things to me as well that makes me think that, you know, maybe fully new is potentially a better option. He talked about how, and, and let me give you a little bit of understanding inside the truck. So inside the truck, we've got kind of a joystick and buttons, and then we've got other buttons here. And they control the spreader and then the plow itself. That joystick, Corbett was explaining this also to me today, that joystick has a button on the top. It's the stupidest thing that's ever been designed in anything. Because in the past, when we first got those trucks, and this comes back to one of my major points I want to end with. But when we first got those trucks, those, that button was designed to lift the dump truck or the dump bed. Now, the problem is when you've got the spreader full of salt and you, none of us knew what that button did. None of us, I wasn't a part of it then, but that button would get pushed or it'd get bumped every time you'd move the plow. And so pressure kept getting pushed on the bed. So what ended up happening is that the hydraulic, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Corbett, but it, it broke the scissor lift mechanism underneath the bed. Because it was just getting beat to pieces by the hydraulics. And the bed, when it's got the spreader on it, is mechanically locked down. So it can't dump the spreader, right? So it, there was no way the hydraulic was going to win that battle. So we did have that problem that we then had to go and we had to replace the hydraulic pumps because they blew. Because they were, had too much pressure under them. Plus, we then had to fix the scissor section of the dump. Now, those are accessory warranty pieces and we, as the city, had to pay for all that. They, the warranty didn't cover any of it. But we did ask semi-service, right? They're the ones that fixed the, the button. They fixed the button so it no longer does anything. So we can't destroy the bed anymore. So one thing I want to make sure happens is if we're going with the new truck route, which I think that's the option. I don't think anybody's saying we shouldn't get the new trucks. We have to make sure that it is set up correctly so that we don't repeat that. We have to learn from the past. What Craig also told me, and I'd love Corbett's thoughts on this as well, but Craig said when that pump went out. It injected contaminated fluids into the blade And the spreader, which is kind of like injecting sand into those, those parts. So now that there's a corrosion flying around in that hydraulic fuel, it's, it, it's almost impossible to get the stuff out from what Craig tells me. It is decreasing the life of the plows and the spreaders. And that was kind of the thing that made me shift my logic on maybe new is a better option. Because if those continue, then like David was talking about, the failures are potentially more imminent. And as David said, the plows are jumping a little bit more. They're not as smooth as they were even in the beginning of this season. But to that point, Corbett, what's your thoughts there?
Do you think that that would, you could solve that problem? So it doesn't repeat on this, these new trucks?
Correct, yes.
No, I, I agree. I mean, it's not, there's not so much of a concern about the contaminants in the fluid. Because all of your return fluid goes through a filter before it goes back into the reservoir. There's a pressure gauges, there's controls on it to win the back pressure because that filter is getting plugged. If the back pressure, because the filter is plugged, increases too much because the filter is plugged, then it fouls out. Or it, it faults so that you replace the filter, but that's built into it. So I'm not so worried about the contaminants in the fluid. Only because a hydraulic filter filters to, I think ten microns. A regular oil filter on your car only filters down to twenty five microns. And so I, I'm not too concerned about the contaminants in the fluid. I mean, we replaced the pump. Again, it was our fault and so it wasn't covered under warranty. But, you know, the pump is a, is, I don't want to say it's a consumable, but it is because the pumps wear out. Their aluminum body vein pumps. And to replace a pump with a brand new pump is about eleven hundred bucks. The initial cost, I mean, aside from the cost of the, the initial installation with the, the reservoir, the cooler, the hydraulic cooler. The valve bank, the, the controls, the pumps, you're twenty four thousand in a, in a complete wet kit. But to replace the consumable portion, meaning the pump, you're only eleven hundred bucks.
All right, now I, I would like to, I, I would hope that the council has been given enough information. And I would like to now turn it over to public comment unless there's something really pressing.
Have one more question for Chris then. Chris, though, going back on, on the budget then. You said it would be additional four hundred dollars per vehicle to get them fully loaded and coming
Per month.
Per month. And so if we didn't do that and we, we did Corbett's route, what would the increase be? It would be less than four hundred, but what would it be?
We've got a couple, we've got a couple balls that would be in the air. One, we'd need to have a capital outlay of one hundred thousand dollars to buy the trucks. So we'd need to buy the old trucks to keep them in stock. Now, could we sell them in between? Yeah, we could, we could make the gamble. And pray that when we sell the trucks, it'll be right at the time the lease is up. But there's, there's a risk to the sea that we'd have to either get a loan or come up with a hundred grand out of our pockets to buy the two trucks. The other thing with the, the current trucks, the bank will allow us to keep those trucks until we get the new ones. So there is a backlog right now for the trucks and for the plow and the spreader and salt. For some reason, if we didn't get them next October, November, the bank's gonna allow us to keep these vehicles and extend the lease without any penalties. So that, that's a benefit right there. But as far as the actual cost, yeah, it's gonna be just about thirty one thousand dollars a year, about six thousand dollars more per truck. With, with, with it loaded like it's been talked about.
So if we, if we got them though, with just the truck, with using our old equipment. Is there still an increase in the monthly cost once all of that has gone through and it's?
Because the trucks are still more expensive.
Okay, the trucks are more expensive, but, but we're talking about a truck that's fully loaded versus a truck that isn't. I guess what's the difference there?
I think the big thing, as Dave and Corbett were talking about, there would be an initial upfront cost for some of the parts that would need The wet kits and those kinds of things. I don't understand what the wet kit is and if it can't be taken off the old vehicle. But it sounds like there would be some initial cost upfront. Sounds like to the tune of twenty thousand plus to.
Okay.
And they're right here, like the hydraulic kit is twenty four thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, Corbett's saying the wet kit can be taken off.
All right, so with that, we're gonna do two public comment periods. So I, I, I would ask that the same principles that apply to public comment generally. So try to keep your comments to within two minutes. But do we have anybody here that would like to address the council? And if you do, you've got to come up and speak into the microphone. Okay, great. Yeah, you bet. No pressure.
Hopefully you're as bewildered as we are.
Yeah, that was a lot of numbers. I'm Kirsten Thompson. So we have lived here a little over two years now. And we have appreciated how well the roads are taken care of. And so it is my opinion to make sure that these wonderful individuals who keep our roads clear. Especially with this monumental winter we've had this last year, have the proper equipment to continue to do so. I have appreciated that in the case of emergency or Work or different scenarios that the roads have been perfectly clear. And so I appreciate though the mindfulness of the budget. But I think this is a greater issue in health and safety of our residents as well in these winter months. And that is something to consider to make sure that our snowplows are in the condition. They need to continue to keep those roads clear. So.
That was, thank you. Kristen?
Kirsten.
Kirsten. Okay, so with no further commentary, yeah, I know. If, thank you. Thanks for being here. With no further commentary here live, we'll go to our online audience. So if you wanna, by show of hands, indicate if you have something you'd like to say. Okay, well, David, that was fast.
I just want to say this, that's all. And this is not meant to take away from anyone else that's about to make comment. I just do want to express appreciation for this council and the past council for, for really investing in this. I mean, as a resident for all these twenty some odd years. You know, I really do appreciate anybody that's been out there and plowed. And there's a lot that goes into it. And part of that is the group that's sitting right here. So I just wanted to appreciate, express appreciation not only for myself, but for the rest of the drivers. For, for what you guys have done in the past and certainly are doing now. So just, I just want to say that, that's all. Just wanted to, I said my other, you know, comments. Just wanted to express appreciation.
Thanks, David. Okay, Brian Hutchings, you won't need to state your name because I just said it for you.
Thank you. So the one thing I do, I don't know if it's been brought up and I apologize for, for joining late. So we talked online, it's been talked about how the snowplows can, can lead the buses through the town. And we've not seen this year, even with the, the snow that we've had, the school buses having to meet down at this, at the church. I also want to point out from the fire department side of things, our plow drivers have been fantastic when we have an emergency. And we get to, you know, if, if it's right in the middle of the storm, those plow drivers make sure that we are getting to those locations. Getting in and out properly. I, well, while we have all four wheel drive vehicles. It has been very helpful and, and one of those times was, you know, it, it was a I can't really talk about it, but, but it's become a, a big deal at the hospital because everything happened so fast. Everything that we did was like clockwork and we have got basically a, a record at the hospital for one of our calls. And that was one of our plow drivers. He happens to be a firefighter EMT as well, but serving as a plow driver. Getting us to that site and leading us in the ambulance to get there and making sure that Salem could get there and get that patient transported. So please, this isn't just, you know, people driving, it's our, our safety. But again, on top of that, in an emergency situation, we have those plow drivers backing us up.
That's a great point. And there are strokes and heart attacks that we have witnessed. The plow drivers are leading the fire truck in that, in, in, in that sense, it's as important a piece of equipment As our fire equipment, our medical equipment. So he's, he's right. That's, that's happened more than, more than, more than once. I've, I've seen it several times this year.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you. Okay.
Thanks, Brian.
Yeah, I, I don't see any other hands raised. So We will, oh, oh, we've got one here live again, Wayne, Wayne Franzen.
Anything to do about the purchase of the truck, but And I'm not sure what the policy is. I was told by one snow plow driver That they couldn't pull somebody out who was stuck, that it was against their, their policy in, in driving. Yet I see pictures posted on Facebook of somebody getting pulled out or getting stuck.
Would, would you like a little context?
No, no, I just, there needs to be some clarity, maybe with some of the, some of the rules, you know, with the drivers. And I can understand, maybe it was his wife he was pulling out, I don't know.
Well, maybe some context does help here. That one incident was because that was stuck right in the middle of the road. And for our driver to do his job, we needed to move that car. So that was the only reason. So if you're off to the side, we apologize. David's very clear. He says, you know what? It's better to serve everybody than just one. So.
Less there's too much liability, right?
No, and I can understand that. What you run into, somebody like me who sees you pulling somebody out. And then next time they're stuck and you're passed in a bind, they say, well, you know, unequal treatment here with the city. So you need to be careful with it, I guess. So anyway.
Thanks, Wayne.
Good point.
All right, well, David, hand up again.
Yeah, just because one, we don't like Wayne. No, Wayne, we love you. We love you for sure. No, I'm kidding. I shouldn't, I shouldn't kid like that. No. I just wanted to say I'm going back to the beach. That's all I wanted to say. If you guys have any questions, text Jody. I know it's cold, but I have to go pick up the towels.
You know, it's gonna snow tomorrow, right?
You lead a rough life. Well, thank you for cutting into your vacation and being here, David.
Thanks. Okay, bye.
David?
What?
Corbett actually was gonna.
I, I, I think just as much. We couldn't do what we do without David Stones. I, I've done that before and it is a nightmare. You're up all night long. Every time you wake up, it's not because you gotta wake up and go to the bathroom, it's because you're waking up to check the roads.
Multiple times, I assume.
You're calling, you're calling drivers out. You, you, you wouldn't get what you get up here without David Stones.
That's right.
I don't want the job.
Now, you just, you just have energy on to it.
Great job right now.
All right, now you can go to the beach and with your now kind of inflated head.
No, I don't, I don't. I don't know why I do it. I, I think I do it just because I want to see how much suffering I can go through in life. So thanks. Have a great storm. We need the weather, right?
Better snow.
All right, see you later.
Yep.
Okay, well, I appreciate everyone's comment and I thought that was a meaningful discussion. So without any further comments or questions.
Can I just make one really quick one?
Yeah.
I just, I just appreciate everybody kind of diving, doing a deep dive and making sure. Because it is a lot of money and we are trying to be really conscientious of the budget. And so I appreciate everyone that individually, you know, did some research and just trying to figure it out, right? We are all trying to make sure we're making the best decision.
Well, and I really appreciated that the extra about the, not only the school buses, which I knew. And I, I knew about the emergencies, but to recognize what Brian was talking about escorting all the way to the hospital. Because, you know, I've been trying to get the state to change the designation of snowplows to be an emergency vehicle. This just adds to that argument that a lot of people don't realize how important a snowplow is to emergency services. So thank you for adding that in, Brian.
So they did not escort to the hospital, but we got them out of Woodland Hills where they could actually get to, so.
Okay, good clarification.
To the more dangerous roads and safe.
Yeah, and we couldn't, we could not do that if we hired out a, a, a private company. It would not happen.
You know what? What you're saying there is absolutely true. I mean, our roads, every storm have been clearer Than anybody, e- even some of the roads in Provo have been worse than what we.
Well, this morning, all the way through Spanish Fork, the roads were a lot worse than ours. Ours were really great.
Anyway, I just, I Out of all of the things that this city does, you know, our, our most critical things are Fire, water, roads, snow plowing, and then making sure that our employees are happy. I don't know of anything that's more important than that.
Amen. Okay, well, now let's put Ben on the spot with the discussion of Summit Creek in West Lowford Drive.
I think I saw a nap in there somewhere.
All right, uh, well, Ben and I spoke yesterday and uh, we discussed uh, the uh the effort to complete West Lofer and Ben, I uh, if, if you wouldn't mind coming and addressing the council and, and just giving us a summary of where Summit Creek uh sees this issue.
Catch my breath after all that. Yeah, so uh, just in general, as relates to West Lofer, um there's a couple of things that are, I guess, challenging about it right now. One is just, just in general. With the current, the, the, the state of the economy and as it relates particularly to development and real estate sales and that kinda stuff, the developer speaking for the developer, they're kinda tightening their purse strings right now. And so they're less inclined to spend money on much of anything. Right now. That, uh, we realize that there's some uh responsibility with West Lofer, but they um uh, as far as timing goes, uh, don't unless there's a real strong compelling reason that it has to be done right now, that they're more inclined to wait. Um, and that does tie into also what we, they also would like our preliminary plat for the rest of our development to be approved before they would consider spending the money too.
That's kind of in a nutshell where. Is that a quid pro quo?
Yeah.
No, but that's just something that they would like to see done just to, for understanding, you know, that they have approvals and they're confident that they know what they are able to do going forward as it relates to the overall plat for the rest of the development.
And, and Ben, I, I appreciate that. Um, now, as I've thought further on this since our call, um I mean, I, I can certainly appreciate where you're coming from. And I talked about this with you a little bit in our call. I mean, so I, I get it. Summit Creek doesn't wanna dump the money in a, a, a volatile economy, but, but in waiting, it puts the city at risk. And so what I really wanted to, to hear today is really just a definitive position. So if I'm hearing you correctly, Summit Creek is saying we are not willing to do our uh portion of West Lofer at this time. Is that fair?
That's, I would say yes, that's, that's generally their position. We're not I mean, we'll talk, right? And there might be someone, you know, people with more authority than me, right, to, maybe needs to get to that level. Um, as far as, you know, pushing this further, but that's the message that I am here to relate today is yeah, they're, they're looking at down the road.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
All right, well.
You know, I mean, there's, there's a number of reasons why to do it now and why it actually is critical. So there's certainly the liability issue. Which is beyond huge. I don't think, especially with as many homes that are being built down there, we really have to take care of this.
No, and I don't disagree. I just, I just wanna make sure.
Liability issue. The second issue is that every year that we've waited, which we have waited a long time, the cost to do that road has increased every single year. And so it's not gonna get cheaper. And that's, that's, that's the disappointing thing. Now, having said that, I understand economy. So I, I yeah, I get that, but.
Being in the business, I mean, this last month was worst month I've ever had, ever in my entire career, like ever.
So, right now, there's only a few homes there. Are you saying that you don't anticipate the, any additional building on your, on your side of that road to warrant having the road put all the way through?
Um, as it relates specifically to West Lofer, yeah, we don't anticipate building anything on those two corners. And the one of them, we don't own. Um, and the other one we do own and we're just, it's not in our I mean, if we, if we sold that lot somehow, you know, maybe that would push us to try and get something done, I guess, if it was sold, but that's not in our.
And then Corbin, on our side, how many building permits do we have on that area right now that are open? Not just the completed homes, but how many do we have open? Yeah, that going on, anything, anyone who would have to drive on West Lofer on our side of that road?
A lot of homes being built on that.
Yeah.
And again, it's a, right now, it is a dead end street that is against our current.
Illegal.
When you say there's, I think you said liability maybe, or that this, is that, is that specifically what it relates to is the, okay. Is the fact that it's a cul-de-sac more than a thousand feet?
Yep.
Yeah.
But I, I, I think that we also need to look at this in terms of, I mean, in a, in a bad economy, Summit Creek may not survive. I mean, it is possible that, so I think that we've gotta look at it in terms of not that there's an urgency, but but I think that there, and like you were saying, Dave, uh, the costs go up every year. And so I, I do think, but I, what I, I, I just tonight, I just wanted to make sure that we understood where each other stands or where you stood, where Summit Creek stands. And so I think from here, we need to look at what the respective obligations are and, and just see what kind of a path we want to pursue because um, I, I agree with you. I think that it is in the city's best interest to move it forward sooner rather than later.
Is there a solution to us doing it and then somehow Summit Creek pays us back later for their portion? I mean, you know what I'm saying? Is there some?
Where do we get that?
I know, I know, we don't have it either. That's what I'm saying.
Sell the snowplows.
Now, I have a question, Ben.
Yeah.
Does it help, you know, if you've got those, the other, the rest of your development approved and, and ready to go, when you start installing those roads?
Yeah.
Does that help economies of scale?
Yeah, we talked about that too. Mayor and I spoke, um, you know, where West Lofer meets Summit Creek, if you were to continue on into the Summit Creek side. Um, we talked about the possibility of when we start that road, since we have a contractor, they're working on it, it would, you know, there might be some savings to have them do West Lofer at the same time.
So I wonder if it actually could this is a pipe dream maybe, a bridge to nowhere, but would that also then potentially decrease our costs as well?
No, I, I love the idea. I just don't love that it's open ended. It's, you know, I mean, who knows when that's gonna actually be done.
Yeah, I can tell you that, you know, big picture, that, that road was on our plans for next year, so it wouldn't have been this year. If was, if that, you know, that portion of the road, so.
It's hoping the economy bounces back.
You're right. Mm-hmm. That's a good point. I mean,
which.
You're, it's hard to say.
Right now, right now, interest rates aren't going anywhere except that.
Now, if we do our end, we're actually just making ourselves more vulnerable, right? Cause we're actually just increasing the length of that cul-de-sac.
I don't think you'd wanna just do half of that. You'd have it all done at once. And that's my opinion.
And that, it'd cost more money in the long run.
It's just, yeah.
Okay, well, we're not trying to make you score him, Ben, but thanks for the update.
Is this, I'm the messenger.
Is this the stupidest idea ever that we, we build a gravel road, a temporary type road and get it through? I don't know. I just, so it's not a dead end.
Be out of ordinance.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah.
Would it be out of ordinance more than Sky Lakes already?
Already out if.
Hold on, let's, let's uh do this one at a time. We got a nice big online audience. Doral, what were you gonna say?
Um. If we're already in trouble, as David pointed out, um, then maybe we would be less trouble if, in less trouble if we built something temporary. I mean, something as, as inexpensive as we could come up with to get it to be a through road is my point. Exactly, but very cheap lipstick without any color.
Who's been putting the rocks on that?
People that are building, they're on Summit Creek Drive.
So they're just individuals?
Yeah, it's not our builder.
Or whatever. So, okay, because getting back to lipstick on a really ugly pig, um, during the summer, people did use that road. Now, what liability the city has when somebody uses an unauthorized road, I don't know.
Yeah.
But they were using it all the time. It wasn't until they started dumping rocks on there that that wasn't possible. Um, I do think it's close to insanity to let that kinda thing happen during the winter.
Right. Now you can't plow it.
Yeah, you would never be able to plow.
It's not great during the summer either, but at least that was I mean, it was no worse than that, uh, the, the old escape route down into Lofer Canyon.
Right.
Which was a terrible idea too, but it existed, so. I don't know. It yeah, that's disappointing.
Okay, no, and, and uh, thanks, Ben. And uh, oh, Wayne's got a comment. Yeah, you're, no, you're good. Unless, I don't know, maybe you and Wayne will have to dance back and forth a little bit.
Just for the council's benefit and understanding to talk about the preliminary plat that uh Summit Creek has provided to the city to move forward with their development. We, that preliminary plat is um contrary to the development agreement that we have with Summit Creek. Summit Creek indicated that there would be no need to change zoning of any of the lots as they went forward. And the preliminary plat they've given us uh was caught while it didn't change zoning, it needs to change zoning because they had side by side homes that were in two different zones. And it would not have worked out from a planning standpoint. So that's one of the reasons that we haven't approved it. And that's all back to Summit Creek for them to make changes on that preliminary plat and provide it again to the city. So I just wanted to make that further understanding that Summit Creek is not waiting on the city right now, but there's, there'll be a kind of a, I wanna say a lengthy process, but there'd be changing zoning, it has to have a public hearing and et cetera. I don't have any expectation to be a problem with the zone change to accommodate that. But right now, that's all with Summit Creek and waiting on them to, to make some changes and to make presentation for zone change for some of those lots that are included in the preliminary plat. So I just wanted to make that.
Thanks, Wayne. And, and I, I, I would concur in that I, I don't think that they're connected issues anyway. I think that the completion of West Lofer is something that at least as I understand it, that's a separate thing.
Yeah, that's, that's kinda why I made my, hopefully it came across the way I meant it to snarky comment of it shouldn't be a quid pro quo.
Right.
It, we, they should be two separate issues. We shouldn't be joining them at the hip. I get from a financial standpoint why Summit Creek is basically saying until we have a level of assurance on this part of the development, we really can't know whether we can spend the money on this other part. And I, I get that, but they shouldn't be joined other than that.
Okay, any other discussion with that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
All right, uh, item four, proposed Utah Local Government Trust Release and Settlement Agreement. We have to table that. Um, we're still working with the attorneys on getting some uh information, so we will not be voting on that tonight. Uh, item five, December twenty twenty-two financials and resolution twenty twenty-three seven approving the December twenty twenty-two check disbursements.
Can we do five and six at the same time?
That's what I was thinking.
Why? I thought that we'd try to stretch this out.
Yeah.
It's not even nine o'clock yet.
We don't have anything to do tonight.
Okay, yeah, so we'll, we'll combine five and six. Any comments or questions?
No.
No, I asked a question last night, so I'm good.
Okay. Chris, did you have anything that you wanted to say?
Uh, no, just, I don't have anything.
All right, item seven, um, this is just kind of a, a standing item. We've got but, but I, I, I was gonna see, um, cause we do have in item nine, and I don't recall your um, your um purchasing and procurement policy addressing disposing of city assets, but we've got some stuff further to our garage sale efforts. I, I don't exactly know what the protocol is. Um, and so I don't know if that's part of the policy. I don't, I, I, and maybe it's something that if, if we don't have a policy for it, we should have something relatively quick that isn't maybe quite as comprehensive as, as that one, but I, I did wanna run past that. But uh, anyway, I bring that up just because that is something that might be germane in the policy that you are working on. So, Ben, anything that you wanna update?
So yeah, we've got, I believe we now have notes from everybody inserted in the document. Um, the next step is, you know, how do we take how do we take and kind of, so there's a lot of suggestions, you know, ah, how about this instead or this instead and right? So now we need kind of somebody who goes through or a committee or something that says, well, probably this or probably that, and then condenses it. Um. And I don't know if that's, you know, maybe the finance committee now takes it from here with all the notes. But, or I go through and kind of, but now it's, I, I don't want it to be Ben's document, right?
Well, and I have some concerns that it's just gonna be a loop too, because you're gonna take those notes and then you're gonna find tune it and then you're gonna get more commentary on that and then.
It'll be the developer, development agreement all over again, right? So I think that's that's the hurdle we're at right now, right? Is we've gotta figure out now, how do we take all of these suggestions, thoughts, feelings? Cause there's some, there's some really good ones. And I think frankly, I agree with the majority of them, right? Cause a lot of them are, well, this is how we do it now.
Right.
And that's really what I want, as long as it's not something that's a bad behavior. I think that's what the, the document should represent on a whole is the current status, the current operations.
I, I, you and I have talked about this a little bit. Can we break it down into bite sized pieces and just do a small section at a time? Cause it seems to me that when we're talking, you know, and, and I, I get there's some challenges with doing that because then you gotta make sure that there's consistency throughout, but, but I just think that if we could potentially break it down into, starting with the most urgent needs, you know, like where do we really have some gaps here?
Well, the most urgent need is where the, the protocols around spending categories, right? So I think if we start with that section, cause that will also grant you the ability to actually approve stuff, which currently you don't have, right? So once we have that in place, I think that's the most urgent.
Okay.
Right? Cause that's the, really what spurred this. Um, so I think that's probably a good idea. So maybe what I'll do is I'll pull that with the notes, disseminate it to each of you. So it'll be one, two pages.
Okay.
And a graph. And then we can have a we can kind of condense it down there and then move from there.
I think that'd be great.
Perfect. Got.
All right, any other comments or?
If you need help.
Thank you.
I have my hard copy marked up. I'm, I'm kind of a hard copy person.
All right, uh, item eight. So when we did our uh, um when we had our budget hearing and we changed the budget, we did add fifteen thousand dollars to the budget for some prospective uh engineering uh being done with the idea that perhaps uh a building addition would be um, uh, the, the right move for the city. The one thing we didn't do though, that I wanted to bring up is like, I, I don't think, I think that the council just approved it being added to the budget. And so what we don't, I mean, that wasn't go out and spend fifteen thousand dollars. So I think that we need to make sure that we're clear on if someone's gonna be spending that money, we need to do the typical come before the council for anything that's over a certain amount and so forth. So I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page as far as that goes.
And it was my understanding that we had that, but that money already allocated in the budget somewhere. It's what I remember.
It was there, we're just earmarking it for something else.
Yeah, I mean, it, it was something where I, I believe we, we increased the overall budgeted expenses with that in mind. But what we didn't do is, is I just think it needs to be clear that this has to follow the same procedures that any other expense would. And so if it's over a certain amount, it's gotta get council approved and so forth.
I would say before it goes to um Jones and Emile, we need to um, as a council, approve the plan.
I agree.
So, uh, Corbin, you and I wanna work on that? Perfect.
Yeah, the, the the concern I have is I think we've actually outgrown this um proposed extension of the building, at least when it comes to equipment. I don't know that it's going to provide enough additional space.
I think you're, you're right.
Well, and then beyond that, we, it, it conflicts with our ordinance, the existing proposed. Well, and then beyond that, we it it conflicts with our ordinance, the existing proposed plan.
The current building.
Yeah, I know, and the very building in which we sit.
This whole building didn't get through planning commission.
Yeah, so there's there's definitely a few things that have to be addressed.
Highline Drive came in second. So there's
There's some issues.
There's some bumps in the road there.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'm just I I'm just saying I before before I think before we spend fifteen thousand dollars for engineering, what I would like to see is I would like to see us actually go, okay, what are our options for housing all of this equipment that we that we have? And where could we actually put it and where would we have enough space?
And bearing in mind the big garage sale. That's going to be my legacy, the big city garage sale.
I am a little concerned. If you if you sell the Chevy truck, it has to be done at one of these like car shows, because that's a classic now.
I want the truck. I want the Chevy truck.
What what happened to the ice skating rink? That was the legacy, not garage sale.
Both. And I wanted a Harmon's down by the mailboxes too.
Oh, yeah.
I'd be okay with that.
Yeah.
But but I'm just, you know, again, I'm I'm looking at this and I'm going, you know, we we need more space. We get that. We know we need that. We've talked about a public works building down by the salt shed. We've talked about land swaps. We've talked about all kinds of different things. But we really haven't settled, so I'm not really willing to spend fifteen thousand dollars on extending or even engineering this until we've got a plan in place and we know exactly what we're going to be buying.
I agree. Well, and and that will that will you'll have a chance to vet that when it comes before the council. So I mean, if it's something where you feel like this is an incomplete or an inadequate solution, then we can have that conversation then. So I just wanted to make sure that these conversations were being had before any money was being spent. So.
Great. Thanks.
Brian, did you have something?
Yeah, so the the one thing I wanted to to remind everybody is there's something has to be done with the rock wall. And this was going to be a part of that. So so don't forget that this was going to be a, you know, going to to look at that part that that absolutely has to be done, right? So I just wanted to remind everybody of that.
No, good point. Thank you. Okay, well, so with that, that's item eight. And then so the council consent to sell. So right now we're looking at the tar pot, the seventy-three Chevy truck and the Kubota backhoe attachment. Those are our items one, two, and three. So I guess what we probably want then is so in in this policy that you're going to be circulating, do we will that address the disposition of city assets or is that something that we need to do separately? Because I I I mean, and I, like I said, I don't recall it being in your existing policy, but and maybe it's something we could put together separately, but but I think we need to have something where the council weighs in on whether or not, you know, I have the authority to to put things on the market and if Dave wants to buy the nineteen seventy-three truck and drive it around in parades, he can do it.
Do we have a bidding war between Dave and Janet?
Oh, yeah. And you want the seventy-three truck too? Okay.
It's a classic like me.
Okay.
All I'm hearing is the mayor wants the document longer, so.
So we went from forty pages to eighty pages.
Exactly.
Perfect.
No, we actually do have, there is in section sixteen, there are some some layouts, but it probably needs to be flushed out a little bit more.
Well, I think that this could be a relatively simple thing. I would like it to be something that.
Well, honestly, it's just a matter of disposal, right?
Yeah.
Whether that is through transactionary disposal or, you know, throwing something away. Those are all things that should be in here, so.
So I don't want to dump it on you. I I'm happy to take a crack at it too, but if.
Whatever works. And I and I'll take a look at it too, because like there's dispositions in here. There's there's a few others, you know, like the property manager shall maintain and update all records and assets that have been lost, stolen, destroyed, scrapped, or sold. So right there, it's granting the fact that things can be sold.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, and and we talked at at one of our meetings, you know, even just keeping an inventory of things. I mean, that's a it's it's within reach, but it's a pretty sizable.
And here it even talks, there is stuff about inventories, right? And because we do need, we're 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 not just keepers of the finance of the city, you know. We're also keeper of the assets, so.
Well, and we've been talking earlier today about the possibility of selling our snow equipment and and I think other equipment that we've had along the way, yeah, when we needed to sell it, we just do it, but it hasn't been in the policy. So maybe just clarifying in that financial policy would be helpful.
Yeah, I agree. But if we if we can do those two discrete pieces
Yeah.
sooner rather than later, and again.
Let's start with those.
If if you want to, if you don't mind doing it, or I can do the disposal policy and then.
Let me first take a a quick look with that eye and see if it's already here. If not, then I'll coordinate with you.
The other thing is maybe that seventy-three truck needs to be part of the auction that we have for when we have our our garage sale, we actually do an auction. See who really wants it. Yeah.
What if we did it at the antique show?
It actually does go on auction. I post those on a a government, well, kind of a government sale website.
Yeah.
And so it does go into auction.
I'm just saying a local object auction so that, you know, Dave and Janet can just keep going up and up and up so we get more money.
You guys are just going to have to go to that state side.
I'm not telling anybody where it's going to get posted so that I can buy it myself.
All right, well, then we come back to we had an ethics presentation.
Oh, man.
So I guess that's another thing. If if Brian already puts things on a site to sell them, then we, again, we've already been doing it. So maybe putting that in the policy of.
I think that's for his job.
Who has the idea to, I mean, who has the authority to put it on auction and is it Public Works? Is it Fire? Is each department has that entity or is there something on the on the bigger level? Because that whatever Brian's talking about has never come to the council for approval, and yet these three things are coming for approval.
Right.
So just clarify.
And we're obliged, uh, 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 correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, uh, we I think we are obliged to put it on that auction site, so.
Yeah, it makes it fair trading.
Yeah, fair trading.
I think that truck is actually worth a couple bucks, so.
Yeah.
And it is a it's a city account that Chris set up. I just manage it. But yeah, that it is. It is a hundred percent a city account.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, item ten, update on city grants.
Parks and Trails, Sherry's. Nobody was here tonight. Remember they were gonna. Do you remember that?
Yeah.
Well, the good news is it's a standing item, so she can come back.
Well, her deadline, Sherry Berger has a has a grant that she was wanting to do for Parks and Trails to get some benches and some things up on the switchbacks, of course, for the switchback. Um, but she's cut down today. She had some some work done, so I need to check on her. Um, but she was going to have someone else come and present that, but it didn't. I guess it didn't happen.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully the timing will work out so that.
If not, we'll go through the protocols and have him reach out to you.
Yeah, we'll we'll do that. Make sure. It was it was mostly in kind, any kind of match, I believe.
I think there was a small financial element, but.
It wasn't very much.
No, and it scales, the grant scales per how much we could offer to be what we could potentially receive, so.
And do we have to commit at an early date to a particular amount?
I believe March seventeenth is when she needs to submit.
But does she have to commit to a dollar amount of match or?
No, it was an open ended, my understanding.
Okay.
Um, it was it was based on what your project was and what the need was.
Okay.
So our next meeting is.
Our next meeting is the town hall.
Is the town hall meeting, so.
So they'll probably just need to do it from the emergency protocols with the grant policy.
Okay. And then, thanks, Janet. Anything else on that?
No, that's all I remember on that.
Okay. Carrie, do you have anything?
Yeah, so, of course, I've been busy during the legislative session, so I haven't done a ton with the the community development grant, but hopefully we can get that RFP out there and select those that are going to be working with the city on that, so we can get these small focus groups organized and everyone can participate. The ARPA grant, which is the the federal government grant for water infrastructure. And we've been waiting to hear about some of the state matching grants. And we've put our name out there. We've done all sorts of things, but again, they've been focusing on water conservation at this point. But we hope that we'll be able to find the one that fits us. A lot of the money is, they say rural, and I keep telling them, we're a small city. We don't have stoplights. We don't have streetlights and we need some some help on this. Um, our water infrastructure problems are not going away, and so we're still Ted and I are still looking to see what we can come up with, what what we can find in this world of money that they say is there. But so far, you have to find the silo that you fit exactly in. And so that's what we're we're trying to do right now.
Okay, great. Thanks, Carrie. And I mentioned this to you today. I'm I'm just really appreciative that you're up at the legislative session with our interests in mind. Okay. Any fire?
Just just we're 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 having a meeting soon with those that matter in regards to our chipping plans. Just a quick warning, they want to chip earlier this year than normally. So I'm thinking, you know, we got some snow to melt first, but.
This year I've actually got a lot of dead wood from trees breaking and.
Yeah, I know. I know. Yeah, we all.
We've got.
Mine are buried in snow, but yeah, so that's just a that's just the first ideas they've thrown at us is having it weeks earlier. So beware, we'll 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 work with them and they'll work with us, but.
Snowshoes.
We can give them two weeks' service.
So, yeah. Um, but other than that, I don't have anything. But that that meeting will happen soon and we'll begin getting more information.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. All right.
I forgot I forgot to mention one thing. The Emergency Management Department, we've been having some meetings and with our volunteers and kind of trying to figure out besides our comprehensive emergency management plan, which I guess I could just talk about that real quick. All of you should have gotten an invitation to be able to see that document and put your comments on it. Um, we're going line by line and you can do the same. It's on the city's OneDrive. And you'll be able to put your comments in and then we can update it as necessary. But in that, we were also going over priorities. And it came to our attention that one of the main priorities in the city with emergency management is emergency power. Now, we have a generator that we can use, but it takes two or three hours or so to get set up and working. The building itself was wired for a generator that could click on within a matter of seconds. And so we did some research through Allen Wakefield. And it's going to cost about a hundred thousand dollars to get that generator. So the Emergency Management Department is looking for grants to subsidize. There are some grants out there, FEMA grants for emergency power sources. So we're going to investigate that to see if we can get one. And then we are also planning some fundraising activities to get that in place so that our city itself is is secure, not just for the lights and the computers, but if we ended up having some sort of emergency where the only heat in town was in here, we might be able to get our residents to a safe place.
Most of us have, a lot of us have wood stoves.
Some some do, not a lot anymore, but you people who have older houses have wood stoves. The people who have newer houses have electric.
I appreciate you thinking about that in our city, a generator of some sort, because you all need to know that our bay doors do not open when the power's out and it's hard to get a fire truck out.
And that's one of the number one reasons that we decided to do it was because we said, okay, ambulance and fire and EMS have to get out immediately. And if the doors can't open, because last time they they ruined the door and truck trying to get out when there was no power.
I would like to suggest some sort of very inexpensive wiring we might do to get our doors at least hooked to a little generator if we that would just mean so much to the to the response.
So that's why we've been looking at that. And so that would come under grants. I guess that's why I brought it up is is that we're hoping to find that sweet place to find the grant that would that would do emergency power for the city, but it is about a hundred thousand dollars.
Are the doors in the basement not on springs?
They they're so hard to get pushed up and then they'll fall.
Is our springs bad?
They just don't. They don't go up all the way. I mean, it's.
And I think last time they went up and they fell back on the truck.
There there's and nothing's fixed. It's still it's still a bad situation. But with electricity, they do it properly.
Yep. So that's on our that's our priority.
Yay.
Okay, thank you. All right, council reports. Councilmember Hilliard.
A new transfer station's still underway. This winter is not helping with the the time schedule, though they still are telling us that they will be up and running on time. But right now, the transfer station, the new transfer station looks a lot more like a swimming pool than a a place to drop off your garbage. But that's that's pretty much everything there.
So there's the rest of sale.
Yeah. Oh, yes. I know you guys are dying to hear.
This is a musty thing, isn't it? We need salt.
Tomorrow's forecast does not look good.
No.
It looks like another huge day. I'm anticipating waking up at four and getting off tomorrow at six. I have a feeling it'll snow all day long, depending on the the weather.
I just read it said two to three feet.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, that's what that's what they're considering.
With all that being said, we might be out of salt tomorrow.
Oh, no.
So just because of the last few storms, we've had a few expensive storms and then the big one. So we may need to be, well, we will. We're going to need to get some more salt.
Okay, well, I mean, all you got to do is ask Corbett and we'll get this underway. I mean, so.
Yeah, well, I think we're trying to not be the broken record.
No, we approved your last meeting.
No, we used that.
They've used it too. And we we have drastically decreased the amount of salt that we're throwing. We're we're trying to be as minimalistic as we can while not compromising safety. But this stuff, it's just wetter and it's it is what it is.
Freaking, yeah.
So we have enough to get through tomorrow's storm, though?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Right.
If we get three feet, I just a little news thing just flashed right before he started talking that said two to three feet expected.
If we get two to three feet, I'm just going to put a white flag at the end of my driveway and you can see me in Martin May.
I think the protocol's green.
Oh, it says it says it says one to three feet of mountain snow.
Yeah. And I do have some people following on on potential avalanche dangers, so because I'm I'm a little worried about that. They've been doing avalanche mitigation in other areas. They don't feel that it's a necessity for us at this point, even though we've seen movement up there. They are just going to keep monitoring it and probably go in just after this next storm to see if there's anything that needs to do on mitigation.
Well, make sure everyone knows there is a small avalanche in our little area.
Yeah, there is. We've had several movements. Yeah, we keep monitoring it with search and rescue has been going up there and checking for us.
This will be the year. So buying the new salt, how quickly can we get it up here? Okay.
Yeah.
Chris?
Ten?
Whatever it takes.
I think probably another ten. Ten.
And that's.
That should hopefully, we've got, well, it depends on how much you trust the groundhog. The groundhog says we got six more weeks.
Right.
So.
That was a month ago.
Four weeks ago, yeah, come on. So we most likely will probably have just a if we buy another ten thousand, my guess, Corbett, you can correct me if you disagree, but my guess is we'd probably have just a little bit at the end of the season, which we typically like to to be right around there.
And Chris, we we can manage that, right?
I'm looking that up right now just to see.
I tried to buy salt.
We don't really have a choice. We need to manage it.
Right, no, I agree. I I I mean, I just want to make sure that, you know, I mean, I guess if if it's ten thousand or less than ten thousand, I can approve it on an emergency basis. if it's 10,000 or less than 10,000, I can approve it on an emergency basis. And then I guess if we have to reopen the budget, we do that, right?
You can take it out of our salaries because they're so big.
Yeah.
We can cut the salt.
Maybe.
Corbett, the last bill we got was February 6th. Is there any more since then, do you think?
He said he doesn't think so.
Okay, then there's still 6,000 left right now, just under 6,000.
Oh, sweet.
Okay, well, that, you're saying that will not get us what we need to get through the year and? Okay, so can, do we have 4,000 more that we can use from some other?
Engineering. We may not have the full 15,000 for the design, but we can look at that. There's a couple of the places to look to. But yes, this, this is, this is too important not to have to move money around and find.
I would say so. Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Yeah, it's my killer. Okay, Councilmember Kinnison.
All right, I'll be quick. We had another very, very good meeting down at the 911 dispatch center that Ben didn't get a go-to. And I love it. That, that is a fun group because to me, they are an example of all other places in the Utah area here that, that everybody looks up to as providing service that's, that's, they're using the latest technology and they're doing, they're doing the best they can to keep our rates where they are. And honestly, Provo, Orme, Springville, they call over there all the time for assistance on Spillman and other pieces of the software that the, that the pros are, are down in Spanish Fork. So we're lucky. But I digress. That's not what I wanted to say. I believe our fees are going to go up a little next year. Pricing will be, we'll, we'll know closer in March's meeting. They think they'll have some figures out. What they're asking each city for is our current population counts. The base rate is based on the population of Woodland Hills and, and other cities. And our population count they currently have is 1610. And I don't know how close that is to being accurate. But, but we wanna be, we wanna be, and I'm sure Jody has dealt with these fees when they change annually. We know how they get the population counts from us. And so she knows more about that than I do. But, but they do base it on that. And, and just a rough guess, our rates might go up with the base and the service fees are probably another thousand, probably for this next year.
Annually?
Yeah, yeah. So, but, but I'll know more again in March. I think that's enough.
Okay, thank you.
I'm giving you the hour version, Ben. You know how it is.
I love that you love it so much. It brings me joy.
I look forward to it. Not very many meetings I like, but it's all tied to the county and they're good, they're a good group, aren't they?
All right, well, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Watt?
We haven't met yet. We meet on Tuesday. So South Utah Valley Animal Shelter, we'll meet on Tuesday. I, I know they're, we, I mentioned it a little bit, but they are looking at doing a new building. I guess the, the location that they're at, and I'll find out more about it on Tuesday, but I don't think they're going to be able to stay in that building because it's not really theirs or something with. So they're looking at having to build another building and that could potentially cost us more money down the road. But I'll find out more details. They're gonna talk about that on Tuesday, so. And they're still above capacity. I know that from reading her email. That they're really full and they're facing a lot of challenges that way. And I've heard that that's actually kind of a national problem right now. So that's what I've heard. Anyway, that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Malkovich?
You have legislative update. This is the last week of the legislative session. It ends midnight on Friday night. There are just over 500 bills being heard. Probably between 200 and 300 of them affect municipalities. So we've been really strongly, they're almost every day and we're fighting and meeting with people and saying, you know, we like this, we don't like this. One of them that is, was what's called circled today, still on, it's still on there, but we are heavily opposed. It's called SB 295 Dedicated Infrastructure District Act. And basically what this does, it allows developers who are non-elected to have taxing authority in our city without our permission and eminent domain jurisdiction. It, it's basically a sovereign power issue to me. I have contacted all of the senators in the state and have said, absolutely no. You know, this is how this would affect us. It would take our, like I said, taxing authority away. It, basically what it does is it allows them to come in as a special subdivision area, a dedicated infrastructure district, and they would be able to bond using the city's bond rate, which is the state's bond rate, to be able to do what they want in that area without our permission. And it's very controversial. It came out of the Senate Committee with a favorable hearing. And yet it stalled today in the Senate. And so hopefully it stays circled, which means they don't have enough votes to make it pass. So this sponsor then circles it and waits until they try to do all the back moves. But I'm gonna continue tomorrow to meet with senators and say, absolutely not. Please don't go this route with us. We don't want people coming in and just saying, well, we, we can do eminent domain. We can get a bond. We can do taxing authority without, without the city's permission. So that's what I'm, we're really focusing. And they call it short.
How is that legal?
That's what they're trying to make it legal.
I know, but how is that?
They, they just, they, they just are doing it. So it's called, like I said, Dedicated Infrastructure District Act, which for short is called DIDs. So the whole entire league is against this. We're going to keep fighting to the bitter end of this. There would be a membership, a board of trustees that are dedicated to these districts. And basically I've heard that it's, you know, it's developers who want to, who have not been approved for certain types of buildings or zoning or whatever, who then could come in and get their own thing going.
But it goes along with.
It's land use.
Legislature over the last probably five or so years is kind of, they've been doing a lot of things to kind of go around cities.
Absurd, city, city, especially managers.
Cities, counties, I mean, everybody. They're just like, they wanna micromanage the world.
Yep. On a positive.
They did to Disneyland a number of years ago and they're taking it back now.
Yep.
You might use that as an example, but it's.
That's exactly what they did at Disneyland. They made them almost their own little city inside of Orlando and it came back to bite them. And so they take, took it back. On a positive note, the lawsuit with Pleasant Grove and the, their road fee was heard in the Supreme Court and Pleasant Grove won. And so now we can look at possibilities. We're gonna see where it all lands as it, as they, as the municipality won on the idea of revenue from a road fee.
Road fee, yeah.
And so that's something that will maybe could be looked at in the future for us. We've kind of, I've kind of talked a little bit about how that would work and make it legal. And that's for another day. The other one that, that might impact us is 499. We've been working on that for a while.
Is that SB or E?
SB. And it is a homelessness bill. And it basically is, right now, Salt Lake County, Weber County and Washington County all have homeless shelters. But they're wanting all second-class counties, which then would include Davis County and Utah County to have some services. Now, we have services that are available and there are beds, there are hotel vouchers, there are other things, but they don't feel like it's adequate. And so 499 basically is an attempt not to mandate yet. Because right now, the law says anywhere there's state land, the state could build a homeless shelter. Now, there are several categories that are in place. So it can't be close to a school, close to a church, close to a park, close to a liquor store, you know, there's the criteria. Salt Lake is running out of spots to put those type. And they also have to be around transit, buses, trains, whatever, and resource centers like food pantries and, and, and other county facilities, so.
We drove by that Saturday night.
Mm-hmm.
And they're, they have their tents set out in the median. It's stunning.
Yeah.
We went up there to, to take my son to dinner and it's stunning.
And so, so what they're trying to do is trying to find enough beds for all of those who need that. And so they're asking the two next largest counties, which is Utah and Davis County, to do their part. Now, we already pay into a mitigation fund because this, the places that have these shelters, they, they take on the responsibility for the building, et cetera, some other things. But there's a mitigation fund that every city in the state pays into to help with law enforcement and other items. But what this 499, we've gotten it to a place to where we're going to do an assessment as a county and as cities. They may want us, we might need to participate. Of course, we're kind of off the beaten path, so we don't really, we're not on someone's radar, although we do probably get homeless people who camp up on the mountains. That may affect some of those point-in-time counts. They go by the river, they go on the mountains to hide, right?
Sherry's porch.
Uh-huh, Sherry's porch. And so.
But at least he was playing music.
Right.
So, so this is just a bill that is, is going forward, that we've, we've gotten to a new place of just doing a, putting out the resources that are there and then the county will be deciding. So the council of government, which the mayor sits on, they took a vote on this to support a different timetable. That failed, so that amendment failed. So now we're back to the original bill. But at least it gives us a, a whole year to kind of come up with a plan. But every city will probably have some sort of fiscal impact as we pay into whoever, whichever city is chosen to house people. Another one that I'm hoping, let me see, one that we really worked hard against yesterday died today. So I don't need to report on that. That had to do with general elections. And then another one that does impact us, Corbett left, but I'll, I'll look that up real quick so I can kind of tell you where that's at. It's Senate Bill 174. And basically that's the subdivision one. And it's called Local Land Use and Development Revisions. Now, last year, this is the one I told you where they said, we're coming at you with both this and Home Builders Association and Property Rights Coalition, both said, cities, you're not doing anything right. This is the one that said, we're gonna do your general plan binding, we're gonna do automatic zoning, we're gonna do all that. The hard work by our league staff and all of what they call us league armies that put out there has changed the bill dramatically. And all of that stuff was taken out. And so it's really quite a miracle that we are seeing it the way we're seeing it. So let me, I took some pictures of it so I could remind myself. So it starts with the gen, the general plan. Then it goes to legislative zoning, which would be us. And these are just subdivision, subdivision things. We were able to take out that the zoning was administrative only and a few other density, upzoning, state appeals board, withholding B and C road funds. Those were all taken out of it. So there's the legislative zoning that when it comes to us. And then there's the administrative preliminary subdivision review. So the city may hold only one public carry on a subdivision. But we don't have to have it, but it preserves the right to have it. We fought to make sure that it's quality, that, to improve the quality of engineering plans so that they, those engineering plans would be in place. Also, they only wanted a 25-foot road width standard and we fought against that to make it a standard road. And then they had some other penalties in there that we got taken out. The thing that now it is on that final, though, the city shall approve or deny the application and may not require the council or planning permission approval on the final. It would end up becoming that, that it would be just an administrative thing once it gets to that final review. If things are changed, it doesn't have to come back to the council. It goes there. Unless the application isn't congruent with the general plan or the zoning map, then it would come back to the council. And so I, we think that is a huge win for cities on the legislative administrative roles of subdivisions. So that, that was a huge win. And then there's one other and I can't read my writing. Let me just look for this one other that we've been really fighting on for the last couple of days. These are just things that we've done in the last few days. There's others that, that are now, we don't really need to talk about. Let's see, let me look on my list here to remind myself. Oh, Land Use Development and Management Act. This is, let me see what the status was after today's meeting. It's in the Senate rules. There are some things that we've decided that we support it as amended. And that comes into the idea of definition of rural real property, municipalities annexation of private property, boundary commissions, clarifies some other things that, about land use, temporary land use restrictions and some of those types of development issues. And so we feel like that we've gotten that to a better place. So we are now pending approving that. But those are just some of the ones that we've been working on the last couple of days. Is there any bills that you've heard of that you want to know what we're, what, if we're opposed still? If we've worked on it, if it's been killed or if it's about to go through? If this one gets uncircled, 295, SB 295, I will text you each and tell you to text our senator directly as, as Woodland Hills City Council and Mayor individually. Do not pass this. It's, it's a dangerous, dangerous precedent to set.
Great, thanks, Carrie. Okay, Councilmember Pratt?
Well, we actually did hold a meeting and approved the yearly budget and reelected all the same officers. It's a very small bunch of people, so it went pretty well. Right, that's about it.
Okay, perfect. Well, Carrie, you can have the balance of David's time.
I forgot one that it's kind of affects us and it's called the proposal to amend the Utah Constitution with regards to revenue and taxation. So this is something they're trying to get to where it would be on the ballot in November. And it is a redistribution of property tax so that at this point, it amends it so that it, to prohibit the state or political subdivision of the state from imposing a tax on the transfer of real property. And so the, so that's kind of the gist of it right now. And there's also another one that would be a constitutional amendment to open up income tax. Right now, 100% of income tax goes to schools. And this would be a constitutional amendment to say we can, they can distribute it as needed to wherever it needs to go. And it would allow them, what they're saying is that's in conjunction with food tax. If they get rid of food tax, that 400 million needs to be found somewhere else. And so they're trying to figure out if we can redistribute our tax system. So those are two things that you need to, you need to think about that. And then there, there are some that are slippery slope bills with taxing that we gotta, we'll have to see where those land before we make decisions. But some of it is property tax, some of it is sales tax, some of it is income tax. So just another thing to keep in our, as, as we go through this week, we'll find out where we land.
Well, and, and I, I think that the property tax especially, I mean, and Chris, this is kind of what you and I talked about. I, I mean, we wanna keep a close eye on anything because that's a, that's a substantial revenue source for us. So we just wanna make sure that if there's something that's gonna hit us, that we don't get blindsided by it.
Carrie, is there a place that summarizes these 500 bills?
Um, yes. You can go to the leagues. You can go to the league's page, and there's a bill tracker there, and you can kind of see what the league bills, or you can go to, you can go to le.uutah.gov. That has, that's the state's legislative website, and they have all the bills. You can see the bill text, the status of the, of it, and what the hearings have been. You can listen live to any of the debates, or if, if something has already been voted on and you want to know why they voted, you can go back in the archive and play listen, and you can listen to the debate.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so for my part, we did have the cog meeting. It focused almost entirely on that 499 bill that Carrie mentioned, so that's all I have to say about that, to use my best Forrest Gump. And SESD, resources, challenging, but I don't know what to say other than, I'm a big proponent of small nuclear, but I have been watching Chernobyl on HBO Max, and I'm a little bit more conflicted on nuclear now.
Different worlds, different worlds.
But, I mean, resources are a real challenge.
Yeah, we could do that, replace the generator.
Yeah. The one that we're going to buy here.
Right.
Oh, I would, I, I mean, well, I say this sort of facetiously, but I would love to have a nuclear reactor right here in Woodland Hills. It would be a real moneymaker. It's small.
Actually, to let you know, so a lot of the energy lobbyists who are at the Capitol dealing with energy bills, they came up to me and, and talked to me a little while ago about some companies that might want to give us a presentation on alternate forms of, of energy that we might have here, and I said that we'd be open to listen.
Sure. No, I mean, it's, it's, it's a challenge, and, and is a challenge that.
There's our moneymaker, right?
Is going to be in the foreseeable future.
There's, there's some, some good options out there that are coming, and there, there are some people that might be looking for cities that are of our size to just consider.
To put a reactor in.
If we could get Bill Gates to come, you know, give us a grant.
Yeah.
You work on that grant. There's going to be some strings on that one.
Too many strings.
Actually, my cousin is developing those small nuclear reactors. I was talking to him, and he says they, they operate on five PSI. And they've taken them and dropped them off, buildings off, and they, they, it's impossible for them to go critical because they don't have enough pressure to go critical.
I was a believer until I watched Chernobyl. Because in Chernobyl, the nuclear scientists are saying the exact same thing. It's impossible for a core to explode, and yet it is.
No, 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 those are, that's, those are apples and oranges.
Those are some of the people who, who requested to maybe come and talk to us.
One more month, and I like to mail.
I said that we would be open to that, and I'll let you know.
Okay, that sounds good.
Just as a future.
It would be fascinating.
All right. Well, so then, item 12, Town Hall Meeting, March 14th. Chris and I have been working with Glenn Anderson, who has very generously agreed to put together another video presentation. We're going to focus on revenues. Further to Carrie's point, you know, we're, we're going to talk about the online sales tax. It is a pretty cloudy, I, I would love to be able to give our residents a, a clear vision of what they can do that will increase revenues. Unfortunately, it's just not really written in that way, and so we're going to give the best suggestions that we can. And then I, I do think that we should tease the idea of a road fee, just because I, I think that as far as revenues go, you know, legal absurdities notwithstanding, we run quite well on the budget that we have, I think, but things like roads are, I mean, I, we just don't have the money for, for those. And so I do believe that having a dedicated source where we get 100% of the revenue is a really good idea. I don't want to pitch it this, this upcoming year myself, but I, I think that maybe that you're following.
You're going out?
Yeah, that's right. I want it the next mayor's problem. Mayor Hilliard here, I want it to be his problem.
Well, and, and just what I explained to you earlier, when I, when I was meeting with some state engineers about this idea of how it's a fee and how it's equitable, is basically the way that, that instead of just saying, okay, here's the roads in Woodland Hills and everybody pays this fee, you would take the frontage of the property lines from here to here, say it's 200 feet, and then out to the middle of the road, and you would have an assessment on that based on a, a cost analysis of what do you have to do every year? Is it chip seal? Is it whatever, fill in the cracks? And then every five years? And then full replacement by every 20 or 30 years, whatever our, our schedule is? And that road fee would be then assessed based on the front of your home, your portion of that which you use, and based on those different criteria. And so, again, as we go forward in analysis, when we get to that point, that's kind of how a fee would work, because it's a user fee.
What if you're on a corner?
Then you would have to pay your whole front, your whole side and frontage.
We don't have to go that route, though, for all you corner lot people. That's just one option, right? I mean, we've got some options.
There's a few options to look at, but that's kind of what it, to keep it to where it's legal as a user fee.
So I'm going to pay for you. Okay.
Yeah, because he doesn't have any frontage.
He does.
His, his driveway.
And that doesn't even belong to you, right? Yep. Okay, well, huh? Yeah, we can carve out, and we can do a Dave Pratt fee.
I mean, you can charge a fee for that sign.
Well, did you notice, did you guys notice that Washington?
Oh, it's your sign?
It's not my sign.
Did you guys see what Washington State is proposing? They're proposing a user fee for all, all their state roads, and it would be based on mileage. So somehow they're going to get, because they're have, because it's a green state, so they have so many electric vehicles, they don't have gas tax that's keeping up with the roads of their state, so they're changing it over.
Utah does that now.
Well, we're, well, not the same. This is going to be a user fee, so for every mile you drive in your car.
Utah does that now.
So you're going to punish people that have to commute, that have to pay more for their gas?
No, they did. I'm doing, I'm paying it right now.
Utah does it now.
Yeah, it's, well, not to the extent of what Washington's going to do.
That may, that may be the case, but I am paying a per-mile fee for the Tesla now.
You have to offer a Tesla or lump sum.
It's still cheaper.
All right. Well, we, we can settle that, another council meeting. So we do have the Town Hall Meeting, March 14th, and then a tentative date for the Budget Work Session. I mean, I don't know if we want to try to hammer out a date now.
For what?
The, the Budget Work Session.
I think we should, because it's getting closer and everybody's calendars fills up.
Just do it, just do it the first council meeting in April.
11th?
Yeah.
And we wouldn't do other things, because the Budget Work Session takes hours, so we wouldn't do a normal council meeting? Just do it a budget meeting?
Well, I mean, it'd be a council meeting.
Right, but I meant, we wouldn't have other regular.
There wouldn't be other agenda items.
Other agenda items.
Yeah, that, that, I, I could get behind that. Does that sound okay to you?
Mm-hmm.
I know you are okay with it, Ben?
I think Drew ran it past Jody, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think it has to go hours. I mean, again.
We want to be thorough. It's our only legislative thing that we have to do is budget.
I understand being thorough, but there's a difference between being thorough and being ridiculous, and we've been through ridiculous.
You don't need to belabor it.
What, the, the number of categories that actually have changes in our budget aren't that big, and those do deserve conversation. So I'm not saying cut the conversation, I'm just saying it's, we don't have that many categories where we actually change that much.
Okay, so Jody says she's good with April 11th. I think that's what she was referring to, so.
Starting at six or five.
Well, I, can anybody, can you guys make it at five? I work from home, so we better, we better.
Not unless you want, Deputy. Yeah, could I get an escort?
Pick me up along the way, too, would you?
Okay, so we'll plan it, April 11th, 6:00 PM.
That would be fun.
We'll bring in dinner, we'll, we'll really make it worth your time.
So we're doing 6 o'clock with dinner?
Yeah, 6 o'clock with dinner. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, let's take a little break.
And no other agenda, no other agenda items. Okay.
Yeah, wait, please.
As it came out tonight, we're all, we're, we're, we're alternatives, and I don't want you all to feel defeated, and we don't really feel that there's nothing to be done. You know, I consider a emergency rich exit, and to do that road and do it, you're going, not asphalt at this point in time, but make it usable so that in case a flood or residents could get out in that area. So we'll pursue that.
Okay.
And come back to you with a suggestion.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
You've been digging through. Okay, nice.
Thank you, Wayne. I got some dirt.
All right, well, why don't we resume at 8:50 and take a little break? In the Pledge of Allegiance at the, oh, all right. Taking a step back, we would like to call this city council meeting to order and ask if Councilmember Lunt would lead us in the pledge, and if Councilmember Kinnison would offer an invocation. Okay.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father in heaven, we meet this evening as a city council for our city. We ask thy blessings and spirit to be with us, that we will be able to discuss and make decisions that are good for all of the citizens that we serve. We are grateful for the people we live with and those that we serve with in our city. We are thankful for their generosity of their time and talents to make this such a special place for us to live. We are grateful for all of the blessings we share, and we ask thy spirit to be with us, and we ask this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Okay, so we already had a public comment portion, but I, I think that we should have, I guess, round two, if anyone would care to make a comment. So I'll just read this. Public comments are limited to two minutes or less. Comments submitted via email must be received before 3:00 PM. The day of the meeting to be included is part of the official record. Emailed comments will not be read aloud during the meeting but will be distributed to the council and included in the official record. So with that, Mylan, you're standing up. Do you have a comment?
Sharon, I think that's a homeless man.
Wow. Okay, so I'll, I take that as a no, public comment, all right? And then.
He's the one we're going to have to pay for.
Yeah.
Online, do we have any? I see, seeing no hands, we will close the public comment portion of our meeting. Item 17, Consent Agenda, City Council Meeting Minutes, February 10, 2023. I'll make a motion. Okay, so, and you know what? I think I'm supposed to be writing this down. Hold on. That's a fast.
You have to do it.
Yep, I think that.
I've got it written down, you're good.
Oh, you, okay, good. Well, you gave me all these fancy sign here tabs, and I thought.
We do have to sign there, so you do have to write it down.
Not on the consent agenda, though, you'll be okay.
Okay.
Okay, so consent agenda, I won't write anything down. So we have a motion by Councilmember Hilliard, a second by Councilmember Malkovich, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item 18, Approval of the December 2022 and January 2023 City Financials.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Pratt.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Lunt, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, item 19, Decision, Approval of Funds to Lease Two 2023 CV 515 Internationals and Snowplow Equipment.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so I think that we need to, yeah, we, so let's, let's be clear on what the motion is then. So the motion is?
So my motion would be two dumps, two dump beds plus spreader and plow for both trucks.
All under a new lease?
All under a new lease, yes.
Okay, so that's a motion by Councilmember Hilliard.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Kinnison. Jody, this is a roll call vote, right?
It probably would be best, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Lunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Kinnison?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Councilmember Malkovich?
It's a hard one, but yes.
Okay, that motion carries. And thanks again for everyone for your thoughtful approach to this. Okay, item 20, there is no decision to be made there.
That was tabled?
Yeah, we'll table that one.
So I, I get that there's no decision to be made as far as the, the road decisions. What is the step forward? I think there's two steps forward that need to happen. One is to look at the idea that Wayne proposed of making it an emergency exit. The other would be, okay, Summit Creek is kind of the one holding it up. I actually think that we need to continue looking at, like, if, if I'm being a pessimist, I don't know that Summit Creek's going to be in any better financial shape next year than they are this year, just because of, you know, reading the tea leaves on the economy and whatever.
They could be in worse shape.
They could be in worse shape. So I think it's important for the, again, the road isn't just about Summit Creek. So if there's a way that we can finance to finish the road and then have them reimburse us.
Going to lean on their property?
Something.
Right, well, so what, what I was going to suggest would be that we start with, what are the terms of the agreement that we have with Summit Creek? And we need to look at that and see, okay, well, I mean, we tried to, we tried to, as a courtesy, say, okay, well, Summit Creek, what is your preference in this regard? And they made their position known, and so now I think that we need to look at this situation and say, okay, well, as a city, you know, do we need to hold Summit Creek's feet to the fire? And I, I think that strategically, we need to probably have a closed session discussion about what we would want to do, but I think that as a starting point, we should look at what the exact terms are concerning the completion of Lofer Drive and go from there.
Okay, so who's going to do that? Because I agree with you.
Yeah, well, I, oh, hey, Wayne just raised his hand. Now, I, I was going to say, I, I was hoping to bring it up in our staff meeting tomorrow, but I think that, Wayne, you would be the, the logical choice for that, and, and so we can get a recommendation to the council, I, I would say by next council meeting in terms of, okay, well, this is what it says.
Oh, yeah, we still aren't having another council meeting, even though it's Town Hall Meeting? We're going to have a really short agenda.
It, 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 it will be, and we can decide if we want to go into a closed session then, or if we want to put it on the next one, but, but I think that by next town, or next council meeting, we should at least have our heads around, okay, well, this is what the agreement as it currently is, and, and maybe it's very, it, it might be, you know, there might be very little to it, I don't know, but, but I think that that needs to be our starting point. So I would say that let's get our heads around that collectively, and then we can discuss next steps.
Okay, so next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, item 21, we're still, like I said, we're still, there's some.
Tabled as well.
Yep, that's a tabled. Items 22 and 23. Resolution, approving December 2022 check dispersments and January 2023.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, that's a motion by Councilmember Lunt.
That we approve those.
To approve? Thank you for that clarification.
I'll second it.
A second by Councilmember Pratt, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carried? Carries? I'm going to have to look up how that is properly, that motion passes, we'll go with that.
Motion carried.
It is, it is motion carried, right? Not carries?
It's carried, yep.
Okay, passed tense. All right, so the decision allocating $15,000 for engineering, so I, I don't think that is a decision that the council makes, I think that's just something that procedurally will be brought before the council. I think that's just something that procedurally will be brought before the council when a plan is put together and then the decision will be whether or not to allocate that money at that time. Everyone in agreement on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, and then the council consent to sell. Again, we're, we're not quite ready to do that one either, so we'll have to wait until we get a policy in place, so.
I think we kind of skipped that in the discussion part, which that's fine, but like, I'm a little confused, not about the Chevy truck, I agree with selling that and the Kubota backhoe, great, but the tarpot, are we not doing?
We still use it, don't we?
Crack seal any?
We have some tar down there.
We don't use, we don't do the crack seal, we hire that out. And the, the consensus is that it's much more economical and efficient to hire that out, but that's why a discussion is, is worth having. I know Ben's got his own point of view on, on that.
I just remember, I just remember that that's the reason we bought that tarpot was because it was cheaper for us to do it.
Yeah.
Now it's switched with economy and probably supply chain and other, and staff and
The staffing's been, I think, the hardest part is, like, we haven't even cracked sealed other than what was contracted out this past season, the two prior, we never got to it because we couldn't get the people, we couldn't get the management then, because it has to be like a five-person crew because it, so it's, this is tricky. But I know when Corbett ran the numbers last, this, this, for this past season, it was cheaper.
To hire somebody out?
Yep.
Yeah.
That was, we saved money by Corbett going the direction that he did.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I support doing that going forward, Corbett. I don't know if you have anything to add to that? Okay. So we can chew on it for another couple of weeks anyway, so.
I mean, we could buy some salt with those.
I know. Well, I, I say again, with this garage sale, I think of the money we're going to make.
We're going to buy some salt.
Have you seen the crap that people buy at garage sales?
They trade it, they trade it.
Where's that old chair? That we want to just
Yeah, let's sell it. Except maybe not as a chair, maybe as some sort of, uh, torture device.
It would, it would be a, a butt fat reducer.
I know, I think it's a butt fat increaser incentivizer.
Well, it's all how you sell it. All right, uh, I, I was not going to, uh, recommend a closed session, um, so unless someone feels strongly that we should enter closed session, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, a motion by council member Malkovich, seconded by council member Pratt, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.